Good evening. Today is March 9th, 2023. Welcome to the Town of Woodfinn Board of Adjustments Spittle Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call to order the resumption of the administrative appeal of Jessica and Alex Bernstein and the Citizens for Responsible Land Use for the determination of Shannon Tuck, interim planning director, contained in an letter dated September 30th, 2022, concerning a Robin Hood Road development application. This time, I'd like to certify the board quorum and take role Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Ms. Gosnell.
Here.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. D'Erone.
Here.
Myself, Michael Bennett. This meeting will recess at approximately 9:00 PM tonight, as close as possible if we do not finish. We will also take a 20-minute break at a good point around 7:00 PM. I would also like to ask that everyone attending this meeting to please place your phones on silent so we do not disrupt this meeting. And I believe, Mr. Golden, do you have to ask us anything, or we're good to go?
No, I think we're good to go. Unless any of the ethical issues that we have talked about over the last seven or eight days have arisen, ex parte communications.
Good. Okay, then, Mr. Portnoy, would you please proceed with your closing arguments?
Thank you so much. While we get set up, I just want to say a little story. My wife is an avid runner, and she often would coerce me into go running with her and say, "Let's go for a short run." I'd agree. We'd be about four or five miles in and realize we have not turned around. I still have to go back. There were a lot of emotions that would go through me at that point in time, anger, frustration, exhaustion, and all that. Luckily, my son is now getting old enough to go run with her, and I can stay behind with my daughter. But all of that is to say is, I imagine you all have gone through those same feelings at some point in time during this hearing. You know, we came in thinking it was going to be a three-day hearing, in and out. It's obviously been a lot longer. We know it's taken time away from your families. You guys come after busy days, and we appreciate that. On behalf of H.S. Robin Hood, we appreciate it. And I think I could speak, and Mr. Nor would not object, on behalf of everyone in this room, we appreciate the time you guys have spent. And today, hopefully, we are actually turned around on the last mile, and the finish line is in sight. So thank you for staying with us during this time.
Mr. Portnoy, can I interrupt you a minute? Can we possibly, and I'll do it, we can do it, can we turn it sideways so that Mr. Nor and the other people could see this as well as us?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
And also, might need to be just a little bit higher. Looks like we're not able to see.
We can't see the bottom.
Sorry.
I gotta get my computer going, too.
Working together.
Wowee.
Need a little higher.
I can get the phone and take a picture of that.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's in the records.
This could be evidence. I don't know. That's where it might go.
I think that...
There we go. Okay.
I think we could pretty much see it.
It's just good.
For us.
You're not on the magic, Gary. It's just a...
I just wanted to...
No, I understand. I appreciate that. So again, thank you for your time. Take a deep breath. We have made it to the end. So we are here to present our arguments today on merits. And before we get kind of into all the detail, I wanted to go over some of the evidentiary standards and other legal elements that will come into play during the argument. First off, and this was from the opening argument as well, the burden of proof. The burden of proof in this case is on petitioners. That means they have to show that the determinations made by Ms. Tuck were incorrect. In addition to the burden of proof, there's also the standard of proof, and I believe Mr. Golden will probably go through this a little bit with you as well as we get to the deliberation aspect of the hearing. But under this, it says, "Every quasi-judicial decision shall be based on competent, material, and substantial evidence in the record." What does that mean? It means if a determination is made in this hearing that's not supported by substantial evidence, it constitutes an abuse of discretion. So again, why are those important? Those are the standards that are governing the question of, again, whether these determinations made by Ms. Tuck are correct. The burden, again, is on the petitioners to show they are not, and there has to be the competent, substantial evidence in the record to reach that finding. Fortunately for y'all, this is not the first time a board of adjustments has had to reach similar decisions. There's statutory law involved, there's case law involved, and there's the interplay between statutory and case law. And just wanted to go over that a little bit with you beforehand. There's obviously federal laws. That doesn't come into play here. But then there's the North Carolina General Codes and Woodfinn's ordinance. Intertwined with that are court decisions, where courts are required to go and often interpret those provisions. And how they do that, they do that through what's called principles of statutory interpretation. And what we have here, if you see in here, there's a hierarchy in the court system. There's the federal courts, but in North Carolina, what you see, there's the North Carolina Supreme Court, the North Carolina Court of Appeals, and the North Carolina Superior Court. That's important, you'll find out later on, because the North Carolina Supreme Court is the highest court that's here. What that means is their decisions are binding on all the lower courts and on this board. A court below them can overturn what they've said. It has to either be done by that court or through a legislative act. With that in mind, there's five guiding principles that we want to bring to your attention as we walk through the facts of this case. The first one, and this is on the board as well, the development process is a process. The permit, and it says, "The permit approval process is not," and this is from a court, "a snapshot, a freeze in time, but rather a process that occurs over time, sometimes months and years, that involves multiple sequence and paths." That's guiding principle number one. Two, state law values fairness and certainty. This is taken directly from the North Carolina General Statute. The permit choice statute specifically says it's created to ensure reasonable certainty, stability, and fairness in the development regulation process, to secure reasonable expectations of the landowners. That's what the purpose of the permit choice statute is, to secure the reasonable expectations of the landowners and to foster that cooperation between the public and private sectors. That cooperation is what the first guiding principle is talking about, how it's a long process that involves multiple steps, multiple sequences. Three, to give effect to words that are actually used in the law. This is, again, from a North Carolina Court of Appeals case. It says, "Courts should give effect to the words actually used in a statute and should neither delete words used nor insert words not used in the relevant statutory language during the statutory construction process." We will be coming back to that guiding principle several times throughout this argument. And what that, again, means, you have to take the statute as it says. Four, construe in favor of free use of property. This is from North Carolina Supreme Court. "Zoning ordinances derogate common law property rights and must be strictly construed in favor of free use of property." And I believe Mr. Golden actually went over this principle with y'all at the December meeting that you had before this. But what that essentially means is restrictions on a person, on an owner's right to use land is a derogation of the, just common principle of it's their land they can use as they see fit. So if there's any uncertainty or ambiguity in that ordinance, it has to be construed in a manner that favors the free use, meaning the owner's right to use it as they want to use it. Finally, zoning boards should provide flexibility and prevent unnecessary hardship in zoning. This, again, comes from a North Carolina Supreme Court case, and it says, "One of the fundamental purposes of zoning boards of adjustments is to provide flexibility and prevent practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships resulting from strict interpretations of zoning ordinances." So we will come back to these as we go through the facts, but again, these are guiding principles that are helpful when you're evaluating the questions that you will be asked to do during the deliberation process. So what are the questions that you are going to be asked to answer when you are deliberating this case? It really is two determinative questions, the way we see it. One, does the old ordinance apply to H.S. Robin Hood zoning compliance permit application? And two, if so, does a single building with three or more residential dwelling units constitute a permitted use under the old ordinance? Let's start with the first question. Does the old ordinance apply to H.S. Robin Hood zoning compliance permit application? And the logical place to start there is the permit choice statutes. Again, this goes to the second guiding principles, which is, "The permit choice statute was to ensure reasonable certainty, stability, and fairness in the process and to secure the reasonable expectations of landowners." It's looking to protect the landowner's rights. And why? It says in the first sentence, "Because the General Assembly recognizes that local government approval of development typically follows significant investment in site evaluation, planning, development, costs, consultant fees, and related expenses." This is not a simple process to do. It takes a lot of time, takes a lot of effort, and it takes a lot of money just to get to the approval process. And the General Assembly is recognizing that and trying to balance that with the government's interests. So when does permit choice apply? It applies if a land development regulation is amended between the time development permit application was submitted and a development permit decision is made. So what's it saying? Someone comes and files an application for a permit. It could be one day, it could be two days, it could be three days, it could be five months later. But if that zoning regulation is amended, after that permit has been submitted, the applicant has the right to choose which version, the version that was in place when it filed the application, or the version that was in place after the change took effect. And that is a choice on the landowner, on the applicant. So let's walk through the timeline a little bit. It starts on May 17th, 2021, with submission of the zoning compliance permit application. What went into that? You heard Mr. Day talk. Starting in January, he would go out to the site. He would have communications with the applicant. He would have communication with the town. He had actually two or three other permits, I believe, he said, with the town that were also zoned Mountain Village, and spoke with Ms. Eisenhower about, "What do we need to do to submit an application? Do you have anything for me to use?" Her response was, "No, we don't." So what did he do? He took a previously approved site plan that was zoned Mountain Village in Woodfinn and used that as a go-by to prepare the site plan he attached to the application. The following day, he received an email. It had questions. We'll go into detail later on when we get to the argument. His testimony is, "I responded to those questions by preparing a revised site plan that was submitted on October 13th, 2021." After he submitted that, did the town request any other information? They didn't. That's the testimony. There's no emails, there's nothing. He provided that site plan, no questions saying, "You're missing this, you're missing that," anything like that. But what happened after that? There was questions from the applicant about what could be, what type of amenities were allowed in the site plan without requiring a conditional use, because at that point in time, the town was telling H.S. Robin Hood that everything was a permitted use. And as Ms. Tuck had testified yesterday, what that means is it goes through a ministerial review. As you may recall, there were basically two tracks at that point in time. Ministerial review, which is just a technical review, does it meet the technical requirements, or quasi-judicial review? And that applied only to conditional uses, and that was a much more involved process. We were being told by the town, it's all permitted uses, it would be a ministerial review. But again, there were questions. What kind of amenities could be included without taking it out of that ministerial review process? To get answers, a revised site plan was submitted on November 12th, 2021. That included some additional amenities, such as a lodge and spa facility. In response, we got the answers we were asking. We were told by the town that that would now take it from a ministerial review process, because it was only permitted uses, to now a quasi-judicial process, because the lodge and spa constituted a conditional use. What was the response? The response was, "We want to stay within the ministerial process. We will prepare a revised site plan, removing the lodge and spa facility." And that's exactly what was done. On December 20th, a revised site plan was submitted, removing the lodge and spa facility. All of this, and I want to highlight with the red line, all of this is done before the ordinance is amended. All of these were submitted before any ordinance was amended. What happened following the December 20th, submission of the December 20th, 2021 revised site plan? H.S. Robin Hood, through its civil design team, received an email from Ms. Eisenhower. In it, she confirmed, "Removal of the lodge/spa facility changes the approval process." That would have required a special use permit and a quasi-judicial hearing. While the amended proposed plan includes permitted uses, again, being told the plan is now only including permitted uses in the Mountain Village District, my, so Ms. Eisenhower's interpretation of the ordinance is, "All Mountain Village proposals go through the same approval process as subdivisions. This requires review by the planning board and the board of commissioners." Why is that significant? Because it raised questions in H.S. Robin Hood's mind as to what's going on. You heard it again yesterday from Ms. Tuck. It was a two-track system. It was either ministerial review by the board or quasi-judicial review. There was no middle process where it would require multiple reviews by a planning board and the board of commissioners. So H.S. Robin sought clarification on that issue. That was in December of 2021. It took till February 11th of 2021, though, to finally get clarity. And on February 11th of 2021, H.S. Robin Hood is told by Ms. Eisenhower that, "Hey, I was wrong. It is not the approval process of subdivisions. It is a ministerial review, but you are going to need the planning board approval." That explains that gap, following that. So that gets us to February 11th of 2022, get clarity on what the review process was. At that same time, though, we also get, oops, sorry, we also get the checklist. That's the first time in February of 2022 that any type of checklist was ever provided or even indicated existed to H.S. Robin Hood. What does H.S. Robin Hood do once they receive the checklist? Following receipt of the checklist, H.S. Robin Hood incurred significant time and expenses engaging a surveyor to prepare a detailed topographical study. It engaged terminus design. It engaged landscape architect, and it spent significant time and money working to update the revised plan. Why was it doing that? It was doing that because it wanted to try to get to the point where its approval of the plan would be with as few conditions as possible. You heard Mr. Corden testify to that fact. During this time, though, some events occurred. We talked about them yesterday. In July, on July 13th, H.S. Robin Hood received a letter saying the application is null and void. Had no warning, you heard Mr. Corden testify to that, at no point in time did the town ever reach out and say, "Hey, we think your application may become void. What's your plan?" We received the letter, and now we're also being told that they're going to rezone the property. As Mr. Corden said, that caused him to lose some sleep. But what did H.S. Robin Hood do? It met with the town. It worked it out. The town re-reviewed the record, all the way back, as Ms. Tuck said yesterday, to May 17th, and said, "You're right. It was not placed on hold at any time, and your application remains valid until August 11th, at least until August 11th of 2022." So what did H.S. Robin Hood do? It continued forward with revising the site plan to ensure there were as few as conditions as possible, and on August 8th, 2022, submitted a revised site plan. Following the submission of the revised site plan, it was actually told that that site plan would be placed on the planning board's agenda for October. During that time, however, there was a transition between Ms. Tuck and Ms. Eisenhower in the role of planning director, and H.S. Robin Hood was actually informed in September for the first time, after 15 months in the process, that multiple buildings actually were not a permitted use. And now, the town was taking the position that they would be a conditional use. And we have that letter in evidence, it's Exhibit 11-2, from Mr. Henning on September 9th. And he says, "In the interest of not having your heads explode waiting, here's a summary on H.S. Robin Hood. The plan meets the definition of group development." First time that was ever brought to H.S. Robin Hood's attention in the 15-month process. As you recall, just a few minutes ago, as of December 20th, 2021, the town was telling H.S. Robin Hood it was all permitted uses, and it was ministerial review. So what did H.S. Robin Hood do? It met with Ms. Eisenhower, or Ms. Tuck. It met with Mr. Henning and cooperated with them to figure out what the best plan of action was. It visited the site with Ms. Tuck and met several times and ultimately reached a conclusion of saying, "That's fine. We don't agree with your position necessarily, and we'll get into that later on. And we've been being told that we could have multiple buildings, but we'll work with the town. We will revise our site plan to consolidate the dwelling, to consolidate the dwelling units into a single building, and we will submit a revised site plan." Before it did that, though, it reached out again to Mr. Henning and Ms. Tuck. And in those emails, it received confirmation from them that submitting that revised site plan that consolidates the dwelling units into a single building will not void the original application, will not affect the date of the original application, and will not be considered a new application. Though, that's from Mr. Henning. Ms. Tuck said, "I agree with all points in John's last response." Relying on those emails, H.S. Robin Hood went forward with submitting the October 18th, 2022 site plan that consolidated the dwelling units into a single building. Brings us back to the timeline. That gets us to October 18th. After that fact, we're told we're on the November 1st planning board agenda. We arrive at that meeting. We're first on the agenda. We're told it's ministerial review, but the vote's not taken because of the appeals that was filed here. A lot had been made, though, on what impact, and there's been questions, Ms. Hoffman's asked this question a lot, and rightfully so, this has been a long time. What's the impact of that? With all this back and forth, what does that mean? Again, guiding principle, this is a process. And we can look to the North Carolina Court of Appeals for that, too. Says, "Land development is somewhat analogous to litigation," which you are now familiar with. "Neither is a snapshot, a freeze in time, but rather a process that occurs over time, sometimes months and years. The claimant may amend his pleadings, dismiss without prejudice, refile, or add parties or claims to the original action." It's litigation. "Both land development and litigation hold the potential for multiple sequences and paths. The outcome depends on numerous dependent and independent but correlated variables." We have those variables here. We were getting inconsistent information from the town on what the review process was, whether it's a group development or not, all that. We were working with the town through that process, as is recognized by the law. The fact that the town requests further information is also no significance. "A request for further information or clarification of an existing application by a reviewing agency or board does not require the entire application and permitting process to begin anew." That's what the petitioners are asking and saying, though. They're saying a request for further information started that process over. It doesn't. It's right there. "To hold otherwise would allow compliance with regulations and permitting to become a moving target to ever-changing revisions or amendments." That goes back to the permit choice provision. "The purpose is to ensure reasonable certainty and stability in the process." By saying the process starts over every time the town requests information from an applicant would contravene that very purpose, it would make it a, quote, "moving target to ever-changing revisions and amendments." But again, that's what petitioners are asking for here. They're saying because of these technical issues, the process should start over. It shouldn't date back to May of 2021. We'll go into more detail on that. Again, the permit choice. It's a very straightforward and simple ordinance. If a land development regulation is amended between the time a development permit application was submitted and a development permit decision is made, or if a land development regulation is amended after a development permit decision has been challenged and found to be wrongfully denied or illegal, you go to 143-755. 143-755 says, "If a development permit application submits a permit application for any type of development and the regulation is subsequently changed, the applicant has the right to choose." All that's required to trigger this is that a permit applicant submits a permit application. That's it. What about the revised plans? There's been a lot made about the revised plans. What effect does that have on permit choice? None. And how do we know that? We know that because we have a Supreme Court case that's included in the brief as well that we have provided to the board that directly addressed this issue. It's the Northwestern Financial League versus the county of Gaston. It's important, I think, to look at the facts of that case because it applies to this case as well. In that case, on June 5th, in 1987, an applicant submitted an initial plan for 187 spaces for mobile home development. Three and a half months later, they submitted a second plan, increasing, and I'm not great with math, but increasing it by over 50 spaces. They also did substantial changes to the road design. Three days later, after the second revised plan was submitted, the zoning ordinance was Five months, five months after that zoning ordinance is changed, the applicant submitted a third plan, increasing the number of spaces to 272, 80 or 90 more than the initial plan. A week later, it decided to withdraw that plan and submitted another fourth revised plan, going back to 244 spaces, like the plan submitted in September 21st. After that, it actually moves forward and submits a fifth revised plan, three and a half months after the fourth plan was submitted. So in total, we're at over a year. And we have three revised plans that are submitted almost nine months after the ordinance is changed. What did the court say? The court ruled in favor of the developer's right to permit choice. It held the developer did not waver, abandon its right to permit choice. This was true even, according to the court, even where the revised site plans constituted material changes from the previous plans based on the number of spaces they wanted to use. What was the court's reasoning? The revised plans were essentially part of the normal give-and-take between the applicant and the regulatory authorities. and the regulatory authorities. Again, going back to the guiding principle, this is a process. This is not a snapshot or a freeze in time. They also reasoned, "Good faith efforts to comply with the recommendations of the reviewing agencies should not prejudice the applicant." Where an applicant is working with the regulatory agency or the governing authority to address comments and recommendations it's receiving, that should not prejudice the applicant. That reasoning applies directly to this case. As we have just gone through in detail, we had an initial application submitted on May 17th, 2021, revisions to respond to initially, questions from Ms. Eisenhower as part of her technical review, a revision to address questions concerning whether or not a lodge/Spa facility would change the review process, a revision to address the response to those questions, a revision to address the technical requirements in the checklist that was provided for the first time in February 2022 to ensure there was minimal conditions on the approval, and then finally, a revision to address comments and guidance from the town received for the first time in September of 2022, that it needed to consolidate all of the dwelling units into a single building to remain within the ministerial review. The same reasoning that we had in the Gaston case applies directly here. The revised site plans were part of the normal give-and-take between the applicant and the regulatory authorities, and HS Robinhood was working in good faith efforts to comply with the recommendations of the reviewing agencies, and in this case, that's the town of Woodfin. So let's get to how petitioners are trying to say, despite all that, despite the law, despite the Supreme Court of North Carolina's reasoning that applies directly to this case, why they say permit choice doesn't apply. We touched on a lot of these arguments yesterday, but we'll address them again. Their first argument, "The old rules don't apply because the May 17th, 2021 application was not," in their words, quote, "legally submitted." Let's look at what the application says. This is the application. That's it. One page. That's it. It's not a long, lengthy application that asks for a ton of information. It's a single page. As you heard all from Ms. Tuck just yesterday, all the information was filled out. Total estimated cost, TBD. That's okay. At this point in the process with this type of development, you wouldn't know that. But either way, it doesn't matter. Why? Because that's there for other projects that are based on the cost. This was a flat fee-based project, as Ms. Tuck said. Contractor? You won't know the contractor at this time. You need to know what you're going to build first, and then you can go and bid it out to contractors. Patch a site plan or draw a plan accurately into scale. Show dimensions of lot and located structures by dimensions from property line. There was a site plan attached. You've heard from Ms. Tuck. Dimensions were there. What's not, though, on that application is anything related to needing water or sewer permits at the time you submit an application. What's not on that application is anything about needing a landscape compliance plan prepared by a licensed landscape architect. What's not on that application is any requirement that you have design guidelines. So what did the town say about the application? We have the testimony in this case of Ms. Eisenhower. Ms. Eisenhower, did you consider the application submitted as of May 17th, 2021?
Yes, I considered it a complete application.
That's the testimony of Ms. Eisenhower, who is responsible for doing the, what Ms. Tuck referred to, the intake process. Again, as you heard yesterday from Ms. Tuck, intake process, which is looking at, was all the information required by the application there? She said yes. Different from the technical review, which is the process that goes back to the guiding principle of the protracted back and forth, where they're working together to try and make sure all the technical requirements are met. So that was Ms. Eisenhower's testimony. What does the actual Woodfin code say about zoning compliance permit application? That's in 5435. "All applications for a zoning compliance permit application shall be accompanied by two sets of plans showing the dimensions and shade of the parcel to be built upon. The exact sizes, uses, and location of the parcel buildings already existing, if any." So that applies if there's actually buildings on the property, which there weren't, "and the locations and dimensions of the proposed building are alterations." So again, it's dimensions and shade of the parcel and locations and dimensions of the proposed building. We'll get into more detail, but again, Ms. Tuck testified. The dimensions were there. Mr. Terrell testified. The dimensions are there. It goes on to say, "The application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article." I know we've hit on this a lot. It says, "This article." And we walked through this article, which is Article 2 in length with Ms. Tuck yesterday, and her testimony was, "There is nothing in Article 2 that HS Robinhood did not provide that was required for purposes of submitting a zoning compliance permit application." Why is the language, "this article," so important? It goes to the guiding principle. You have to give effect to the words actually used in the law. And that's not me saying it. That's the North Carolina Court of Appeals and the North Carolina Supreme Court. "A basic tenet of statutory construction is that where the language of a statute is clear and unambiguous, there is no room for judicial construction, and the courts must construe the statute using its plain meaning. Furthermore, courts should give effect to the words actually used in a statute, and should neither delete words used nor insert words not used in the relevant statutory language during the statutory construction process." That's the Court of Appeals, North Carolina Supreme Court. "Zoning regulations are in derogation of common law rights, and they cannot be construed to include or exclude by implication that which is not clearly in their express terms." You cannot read 5435 to include things that are not expressly in there because these are in derogation of the common law right to use your land. You have to read this article literally. It says, "This article." Again, this article, Article 2. You don't look beyond it. You can't. You are told you can, again, by the courts, by the Court of Appeals and the North Carolina Despite that, we get to petitioner's arguments. Their arguments are fourfold. It didn't include the dimensions. It was required, and it was required to include information outside of Article 2, and those are the last three up there. It was required to include information in 54318, 54249 E8, and 54249 E12, all of which, again, whoops, are not in this article, are not in Article 2. But let's start again. How, what did we use when we submitted a site plan? Again, this is testimony from Mr. Day. He relied on a site plan that was already approved by the town of Woodfin in a Mountain Village residential zoning district. What did he have to know what to put in it? That was it. He had no checklist. The testimony is clear. There wasn't a checklist that existed. He didn't receive that checklist till February 2022. But what about the dimensions? You heard Mr. Day testify. The dimensions are there. I drew it to scale, included this graphic scale. It's right here on the plan. This is a plan. Ruler. You can get any dimension you want, not just the dimensions of buildings. If you want to know dimensions with the distance between trees, distance between parking spaces, anything. So it actually gives more information than what's required by the application. It's not just dimensions of buildings. Anything and everything your heart desires, you can figure out using this graphic scale down below. That graphic scale was included on the initial site plan. It was included on the every single revised site plan, on the October 2021, on the November 2021, on the December 2021, on August 2022, and October 2022. What did Mr. Terrell, who's been doing this land use, he's an expert in this for 40 years, actually helped draft the permit choice statute say about this? He's seen thousands that contain graphic scales like the one here. So in your professional opinion, was the May 2021 application incomplete because the site plan did not contain dimensions? It was not. In fact, the dimensions were there to the extent the graphic scale was there. What did Ms. Tuck say? Yesterday, she said the dimensions were there. Do we need a table with the dimensions? Her testimony was, "No, actually, that's not the preferred way to do it." Mr. Day, did the site plan draw the plan accurately into scale? Yes, it did. Okay? And does it show the dimensions of a lot that located structures by dimensions from the property line? It shows the units in relation to the property line. But there is a lot of structures on there, so they don't individually all have distances labeled. You would use a master scale to determine that. Why can't you draw the lines? Because if you drew the lines with that many buildings, you wouldn't know what was going That's what Mr. Day testified to later. What would happen if you did address each structure on that site plan individually? His testimony. "Part of my job as a design professional in submitting plans is to make the plans that are legible and able to be read, and if every structure on the site plan had a dimension to the property line call out, it would be difficult to follow. So we utilize the drawing, the plan to scale, issuing out the scale and publishing it, and then keeping a reference in case that is then reduced or enlarged so that we have a reference scale there." Was that the same method that you did with other site plans in Woodfin? The same in Woodfin, as well as basically every other jurisdiction we submit to? Mr. Day testified that over the past 10 years, he has submitted 3,500 zoning compliance permit applications in western North Carolina, including Asheville, Woodfin, and other jurisdictions. 3,500. This is the same method he uses in those. That's dimensions. The dimensions are there. It's that simple. Moving on to their second argument, sewer and water permits. Their argument is, "This was a group development when submitted, and the applications for group developments require approvals for proposed sewer and water distribution systems." It's important to remember first, the town's position prior to September 2022. Ms. Eisenhower, as you recall in that December email, confirmed that multiple buildings were a permitted use. It was only till September 2022 that the town took the position multiple buildings was a conditional use. What was the basis for that? Like, how was Ms. Eisenhower coming to that conclusion? Well, let's look at the language of 54249. Mountain Village District. Just looking at the title alone, it talks about a village. I don't know any village that's just one building. It implies multiple buildings. And it's to permit a range of mixed, high-density, single-family, and multi-family housing types in higher residential areas. So the language alone implies multiple buildings are allowed in Mountain Village districts. Let's also look at the permitted uses. Dwelling's multi-family, dwelling's single-family detached, cottage clusters. Not a cottage, a cottage clusters, meaning multiple cottages. Accessory structures. Not an accessory structure. Accessory structures are permitted uses. So it was reasonable, based on this language and based on the fact that Ms. Eisenhower is telling HS Robinhood that this was, multiple buildings were permitted use, it was of reasonable belief based on this plain language of the Mountain Village ordinance. Ms. Tuck also acknowledged that there was inconsistency in the town's position. Your interpretation was different than Ms. Eisenhower's. Yes, that's correct. But as you recall earlier, with the guiding principles, the applicant should not be prejudiced by trying to work and cooperate with the town. That's what we were doing. We were receiving inconsistent information, but we were working with the town to address that information. The law is clear. The applicant should not be prejudiced because of that. CRLU seems to appear to also have that same belief. In their July 31st, 2022 newsletter, they say, "We believe the developer intends to submit a revised plan for these properties that is likely to involve high-density and/or mixed use as allowed by Mountain Village zoning requirements." That's from their July 31st, 2022 newsletter. That's before we were told by the town that they were now taking the position multiple buildings was a group development. So that goes to the first part of their argument. They said, "We should have just read the group development provision and known that that should have applied." Well, on those facts, it was reasonable to believe group development didn't apply. It was reasonable to believe that multiple buildings were permitted use in Mountain Village districts. Second part of their argument is that applications for group developments require approvals for proposed sewer and water distribution systems. But let's look at the language that they rely on. The bottom part with the ellipses is a language directly from their expert report, and you heard Mr. Terrell testify about the significance of that ellipsis. What was taken out? It says, "The procedure for approval of group development plan shall include the submission of a design plan showing the proposed layout, including the location of buildings, driveways, street parking spaces, and recreation areas to the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment for study prior to final approval." Again, "study prior to final approval." It doesn't say anything about with a zoning compliance permit application. That said, you heard Ms. Tuck testify, we still have that because of the site plan that was submitted with the graphic scale. The second sentence then says, "Where applicable, the design plan package shall include approvals for the proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution systems." Where applicable. That means it's not always, it doesn't apply every time. The town has to say it applies. Not only that, it's provided for study prior to final approval, not at the time of an This is what Mr. Terrell had to say. So is it, again, Mr. Terrell, who has spent 40 years working with towns and other agencies? So is it your personal opinion that Section 54318-5 is inapplicable for purposes of determining whether HS Robinhood submitted its zoning compliance permit application on May 17th, 2021? That is my professional opinion, but there are other reasons that go into the fact that it's not a group development. He's talking about what we had previously discussed, that the language in the Mountain Village Jordans actually contemplates multiple buildings. You also heard Ms. Tuck talk about sewer and permits yesterday, and she talked about the permits and then also sewer and water allocations. The permits don't come in until after the zoning permit is actually issued. That's later. Now, there are allocation letters that are sometimes required, and that's just saying, "Hey, do you think you will be able to supply the amount of water necessary based on the density of this development?" What was her testimony as to when that was needed? That's after board approval. That's not at the time of application. It's after board approval. Water and sewer permits, different than the allocation. What does CRLU have to say about this? This is from their August 30th, 2022 presentation, which they said reflected the information they were receiving from the town, and they were informing their members the information they were receiving from the town. Step one, get approval and grant a zoning compliance permit from the town. There's then a second step after that is the zoning permit is issued by the town. That's where you get the land disturbance permit. Then there's the water and sewer plans approved by Woodfin Water District and Metrich Palatin Sewer District. Step three. That's consistent with everything that Ms. Tuck told you about yesterday. You can't have sewer and water permits at the time you submit an application. You don't know what you're even building. That comes later in the process. That comes later in the process. We also have the testimony of Mr. Day about this. At any point during your conversation with Mrs. Eisenhower in May 2021, did she say that H.S. Robin Hood needed to provide approvals for proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution systems with the zoning compliance permit application? No, I wouldn't remember that. Again, where applicable? Never said it was applicable. We didn't need it at the time to submit an application. They also point to 54-11. 54-11, though, again, as Ms. Tuck testified yesterday, that's in Article 1, the general provisions. It's not in Article 2. Going back to the guiding principles, you have to give effect to the words actually used in the law. 54-35 says this article. It's not in this article. But what else does this say? It says, "No zoning permit shall be issued." It's not talking about submission of a zoning compliance permit application. Ms. Tuck said it's talking about the issuance of the actual permit, which comes even after board review and approval. This has nothing to do with the question of whether or not H.S. Robin Hood properly submitted this application. Testimony of Mr. Terrell. So starting with the first one, he cites Section 54-11, and the he, he's referring to is the petitioner's expert, Mr. Green. It says, "No zoning permit shall be issued until a safe and adequate water supply and sewage disposal system is ensured and sanitary permit is issued by the appropriate county and state agencies." Did I read that correctly? You read that correctly. You will note that the date on the origin, that the date on that originally is 1973. That is in reference to Wall and Septic. He also goes on to say, it's also outside Article 2. Again, going back to the guiding principles set forth by the North Carolina Supreme Court. More testimony from Mr. Terrell. Again, these provisions are outside Article 2. What's required is guided by 54-35. It's a very specific term. Where's Mr. Terrell getting that from? He's getting that from the North Carolina Supreme Court, the guiding principle. February 2022, receive a checklist. Again, what's not on that checklist? Anything about sewer-water allocation? Anything about sewer-water permits? It's not there. It's not there. It's not on the checklist. It's not on the application. It's not in 54-35. It's not in Article 2. That's sewer and water permits. It's not required at the time of application. Landscape compliance plan. What does that statute say? Landscaping and debuffing shall be provided as part of an approved master plan. Does it say anything about needing to submit it with an application? It doesn't. Why is that important? It goes back to our principles. You can't insert words through implication. If it doesn't say anything about the zoning compliance permit application, you cannot imply that into this section of the ordinance. That is in contravention to well-settled law set by the North Carolina Supreme Court. What does the town have to say about it, too? Here's what Ms. Eisenhower said.
Mr. Henney, I believe also asked you last night about the need for a landscape plan, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe your testimony was that a landscape plan from a licensed landscape architect was not required for purposes of submitting a zoning compliance permit application, right?
Not for the purposes of submitting an application.
That's Ms. Eisenhower, who is charged with interpreting and applying Woodfin's code. It's not required for purposes of submitting a zoning compliance permit application. What did Mr. Terrell have to say, based on his expert opinion? He talks, again, what I just mentioned. There's nothing in there referencing a zoning compliance permit application. So he talks about that. There's the absence of the language, going back to the guiding principle. You can't imply that it's required if it doesn't say that, because these are in derogation of the free use of land. 2 is not in Article 2. Again, going back to the guiding principles. Again, further testimony from Mr. Terrell. It's outside Article 2. Your detailed landscaping is typically very late in the process. And why is that? Again, it's because of, going back to the guiding principle, this is a process. There are changes in the site plans. With changes to the site plans, the landscaping plan would change, too. It makes sense to do that as you get closer to the finish line, when you know exactly what that site plan is going to look like when you're going to submit it to the board We not only heard from Ms. Eisenhower about whether or not they were, landscape compliance plan was needed for purposes of submitting the application, is it even needed for purposes of getting approval by the board?
So you were routinely declaring applications to be incomplete, insufficient, not submitted if they didn't have a landscape plan like this?
Correct.
Can I ask a question? Could you go in front of the planning board for approval without these items? Without the...
You could go in front of the planning board without them with the condition that they be submitted prior to the permit being issued.
Okay.
From Ms. Eisenhower, who was charged with interpreting and applying the ordinance, you don't need it for the application. In fact, you don't even need it to go before the board. The board can approve a plan without a landscape compliance, or approve a site plan in application without a landscape compliance plan, subject to conditional approval. That's what Ms. Tuck also said. I fully expect that we would have received a landscape plan when the time was right. Why is that important? Going back to the Gaston case that we had talked about before, in that case, the opponent was talking about the fact that there was a lack of approval of water system prior to submission to the planning board. What did the court say? "It is clear from the record before us that Gaston County's usual practice is to grant permits upon condition that the approval be later obtained. The reason for this practice is that the water system cannot be designed until wells are drilled, which occurs after the plans are approved." Town practice is important here. You don't need to submit a zoning compliance permit, or a landscape compliance plan with an application, but you don't even need it at the time of approval by the board. North Carolina Supreme Court. They didn't talk about design guidelines. This is the provision that deals with it. This one does mention applications. Why is that significant? Again, the landscape plan did not. So you have to presume that there is an intent for including it here, but not there. Applications and master plans for mountain villages shall be accompanied by urban and architectural design guidelines to be prepared by the applicant. It then goes and provides the three guidelines. Guidelines for residential structures shall include 1, 2, and 3. Petitioners have said those guidelines are not included with the application. But they're in the building notes, in the initial site plan, in every single revised site plan thereafter. Why were they there? Mr. Day testified. Looking back at the May 2021 revised site plan, does that include any architectural design guidelines that were referenced in the mountain village ordinance? So I included building notes that looked direct, that I took directly from a code that Mrs. Eisenhower sent to me. He took the bill, he took the guidelines directly from the code that Ms. Eisenhower sent him and included it there. They're there. Ms. Tuck testified yesterday, too, about what's required by this provision. You have the three guidelines, but what else is required? Her testimony was, nothing's required. Why? Because it's all shoulds. Mountain village should reflect, North Carolina, the western North Carolina, and should be designed and constructed. Within the mountain village should be quality. It talks about the materials, should be, should, should, should. What's the significance of that? Goes back to some of our guiding principles. The law is well-settled. It wasn't Ms. Tuck just saying that because that's her opinion, that should does not impose mandatory requirements. That's the law. Should is precatory and permissive. It does not mandate conduct. That's from a Fourth Circuit case constraining North Carolina law. What does a Supreme Court justice have to say about the word "should" used in statutes and ordinances? Same thing. It's not mandatory. It's merely guidance and recommendations. So it comes down to, the petitioners have claimed that the site plan provided on May 2021 was inadequate because there weren't, according to petitioners, the dimensions. We've dealt with that. The dimensions are there. There's a graphic scale. Because it did not have sewer and water permits. We've talked about that. Those aren't required. Those come later down the road. Even the allocation letters aren't necessary at this time. They're after the approval of the plan. The landscape compliance plan, there's nothing in that ordinance that says landscape compliance plan is required at the time of submission of an application. It's not in there. One has been provided as part of the process between the town and H.S. Robin Hood, but it wasn't necessary at the time the application was submitted. And finally, the design guidelines. The three guidelines that are specifically referenced in that statute were all there, starting from day one. Everything else is mere recommendations and guidance. It was complete. But what the petitioners are doing is they have disregarded Gaston, which says you can revise the site plans. That's part of the process. That's part of the back and forth. Instead, they're relying on a case from the North Carolina Court of Appeals, the Ashe County case. In their brief, the petitioners claim that Ashe County is, quote, "virtually identical to this case." That's directly from their brief. It's not. We'll tell you why it's not. This is more from their brief. This is their characterization. The North Carolina, from their, from their brief, "The North Carolina Court of Appeals recently ruled on what is required for a permit application to be considered submitted in Ashe County versus Ashe County Planning Board. There, the court held that an application is not submitted within the meaning of the permit choice statutes until it is complete. This includes the applicant having obtained all necessary permits and providing those permits to the town." Again, those ellipses are in there. What was taken out? What was taken out was the actual language that's at issue from the, language from the ordinance that issue, which specifically said the applicant must have obtained all necessary federal and state permits. Ashe is not talking about just any ordinary permit. They aren't saying, as the petitioners are saying, that based on Ashe, in order for any developer to submit an application, you have to have every permit in hand. That's not what it said. It said federal and state permits. Why did it say that? Let's talk about the facts. Ashe. It involved a company trying to operate an asphalt facility, which is a high-polluting industry use. It's not a multi-family development. It involved a specific polluting industry ordinance. It was a single permit system under that ordinance. What that meant was, it's one and done. There's one approval. That's it. And in order, under the specific ordinance in Ashe County, not the Woodfin ordinance, under the ordinance that's at issue in this case, it required that the applicant pay the fee and have obtained all necessary federal and state permits. Why does that make sense? It's a polluting industry. It's, the asphalt facility is a polluting industry. It's governed and regulated by federal and state agencies. Before a town could ever even say, hey, you can go and operate this facility, you need to get approval from the federal and state agencies. The town can't say, go ahead, without those. It makes sense that that statute requires it, or the ordinance requires it here. What else was said here? The developer, in that case, asked the planning director if it could issue the permit with a condition that all other required permits would then be obtained at the start of operation. What was his response? In response, the director stated, "They lacked authority to issue the requested permit without authorization from the planning board, given the language in the ordinance is pretty clear." That's directly from the case. Planning director's saying, "I can't conditionally approve this. The language specifically says the applicant must have obtained the necessary federal and state permits." Again, it makes sense. It's a polluting industry. In order for the county to approve something, they need first to get approval from federal and state agencies, environmental agencies, all the agencies that come into play in that So again, Ashe is different. It's a different type of application that's at issue than what's at issue in this case. It involves a construction and operation permit. Here, as you've heard, we are at the very beginning of this. This is a zoning compliance permit. This is simply to say, you can go build this. But that doesn't give us the right to build. We then have to go work with the county, get the land disturbance permit, get the building permits. But first, before we can get those permits, we have to be approved by the town. The permit system that issue in that case, again, it was a single permit system, meaning once the county approved it, they can go do what they need to do. That's not what is at issue here. This is a multi-step process where we are just in the very preliminary stage, the entitlement Where conditional approval is allowed in that case? No. The planning director specifically said they're not. We can't do that. We need everything before we can say go, because it's a single permit system. They're allowed here, though. We've heard testimony on it. The requested use of the land in that case is what's called an unlawful purpose, meaning you don't have the right to do that without approval. Approval from not only the county, but from the federal and state agencies. Here, what's the use? It's what's called a lawful by right use. It's a residential development. It's a permitted use. What's also critical is the Ashe case is interpreting and applying the applicable local ordinance at issue in that case, the polluting industry ordinance. It's not applying 54-35. It's not applying the certificate of zoning compliance permit in this case. Also, what permits were required to get that? It specifically says state and federal permits. What does 54-35 say about permits? Nothing. Simply put, we're comparing apples to bowling balls. Ashe is not applicable to this case. Gaston, though, that we've talked about before, is, which says, you can revise site plans. That doesn't affect your permit choice rights. You have every right to do that. That's part of the process. The process that Ms. Tuck has referenced, the process Mr. Terrell referenced, the process that even Ms. Bernstein referenced. So that brings us to conclusion of argument number one. Was the zoning compliance permit application submitted by H.S. Robin Hood on May 17, 2021, submitted pursuant to the applicable ordinance in effect, the May 2021 ordinance? The answer is yes. The application was filled out. It had a site plan. The site plan was drawn to scale with the graphic scale for which you could not only get the dimensions of the buildings, but anything you want. Brings us to argument number two. The old rules do not apply because the May 17, 2021 application was discontinued when H.S. Robin Hood failed to provide the information reasonably requested by Ms. Eisenhower in her May 17, 2021 email to Chris Day. Again, this is going back to that set of six questions that Ms. Eisenhower sent as part of the technical review process. What does, what does the actual statute say? It says, "If a permit applicant is placed on hold, or if a permit application is placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months or more, or the applicant..." for a period of six consecutive months or more, or the applicant fails to respond to comments or provide additional information reasonably requested by the local or state government for a period of six consecutive months or more, it's discontinued. Again, fails to respond or provide the information. What was the town's position on whether or not Mr. Day responded to the information?
I believe it was your testimony yesterday, too, that the October 2021 revised site plan responded to each of your questions and comments that you sent to Mr. Day on May 17th, 2021, correct?
Correct.
So just for the avoidance of doubt, any questions that were in the May 17th, 2021 email from you to Mr. Day were adequately addressed, in your opinion, by the October 2021 site plan?
That's correct.
That was her testimony. The October 2021 site plan adequately addressed my questions. She didn't have any questions for Mr. Day after he submitted that. She didn't say, hey, you failed to respond to this. It's not in the record because they adequately addressed it. What did Ms., what did Ms. Tuck have to say about it?
And then if you turn to page RD 160, we get to their actually conclusion or argument that they made. And then at the bottom, it's, sentence towards the bottom, it starts with, as a result, the developer's failure to respond to the town's questions resulted in a discontinuance of the application review and the version of the development regulations in place as of January 22 applies to this application, not the version of the ordinance in place as of May 17th, 2021. Did I read that correctly?
You did.
Do you agree with that statement?
I do not.
Why not?
Because I believe that the developer did respond to the town's questions within a reasonable time period.
And Ms. Eisenhower previously testified to the facts, too. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's testimony from Ms. Eisenhower. In direct response to her questions, they were adequate. And that's testimony from Ms. Tuck saying that they responded appropriately. What did Mr. Day have to say about it? Well, Mr. Day continued to work on the plan. He provided, he continued to work and he provided the October 2021 site plan. And as he said, that site plan color-coded the structures to address her question about the building types. He changed the development data box to address the comment she had about, Ms. Eisenhower had about the density. He identified the parking spaces and clarified where the garages for parking for duplexes would be. He identified street trees and landscape buffers, adding parking area landscaping aisles and noting how it would be in compliance with the landscape guidelines. He clarified that the open space will remain open. He responded to each of those questions through that revised site plan. Again, too, just to point out, because a lot has been made about the question about the landscape plan. Ms. Eisenhower's question was not, you failed to provide a landscape plan, I need one. It was simply, do you have one? And why? Because that will be required as part of an approved master plan. Again, she doesn't say you needed one when you submitted the application. She's asking, and it's important to remember the context of this. At the end of this same email, which was May 17th, 2021, she was asking, do you want to be on the June board agenda? Matter of two weeks later. If you want to be on that, I'm wondering if you have a landscape plan. She's asking it for that purpose, not because it wasn't in the application. And this is the testimony of Ms. Tuck. Do you agree with that statement? I do not. Why not? Because I believe the developer did respond to the town's questions within a reasonable time period. So you have the testimony from Ms. Tuck. You have the testimony from Ms. Eisenhower. And you have the testimony from Mr. Day about how the October 2021 revised site plan addressed each of those questions. The only people to argue and say that it wasn't adequately addressed are the, is the party that was not involved in the process. That's the only person here that's arguing it wasn't adequately addressed. The parties that were involved in the process all say the questions were adequately addressed and in less than six months, within a five-month time period. So that brings us to conclusion of argument number two that the petitioners are asserting. Did HS Robin Hood adequately respond to Ms. Eisenhower's questions in her May 17th, 2021 email? Again, yes. Ms. Tuck said it. Ms. Eisenhower said it. And Mr. Day explained in detail how he addressed each of those questions. Argument number three, the old rules do not apply because the May 17th, 2021 application was discontinued when Chris Day placed the application, quote, "on hold" on May 18th, 2021 for a period of six or more months. Again, this goes to the first part where if you place, if the application is placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months. This is the email they're relying on. Hey, Adrian, we are working on a few details to respond to your comments. Please do not put this on the agenda until we get back with you. That's all it is. It's not saying put it on hold. We're responding to your comments. It's May 17th. Don't put this on the June agenda. That's a matter of two weeks away. We have to respond to your comments. He's not saying put it on hold. He's in fact telling them they're actually working on it. How can he say they're putting it on hold when he's telling her they're working on a few details to respond to the comments? He's indicating we're working on it, not put it on hold. We don't want to move forward with it. And again, it was in response. Are you planning to be heard by this planning board? No, we're working to respond to your comments. Don't put it on the agenda. That's not putting it on hold. That's responding to the comments and letting her know we are continuing to work on it. Ms. Bernstein, again, talked about this in the opening. Even she was not able to tell you definitively whether or not that was putting it on hold.
Remember seeing where the applicant asks to put their application on hold.
You're going to have to ask a witness that, not a board member. If, if somebody answered.
Into the book, yeah, Dennis.
Could you ask a question?
Is this the, that document?
Yeah, this, this was in, so asking not to be put on the next month's agenda is also saying we don't, we want our application to be put on hold. I, I agree. This is, please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back to you. So it's, it's, it's definite with the wording of that request.
Is that also the same kind of basis that they used this determination on? And forgive me, Mr. Hanson, appear yourself, question.
Would that be the same thing as saying, do no more work or consideration of this just because you've kept it off the agenda?
I don't think, I don't. I think this is just asking, don't put it on an agenda.
Okay, so, but if they're then doing more work or consideration of the application, would that be on hold?
I am not sure what work you, one would be doing on a project if, if you receive a request from the applicant to not put it on an agenda. You know, to me, that's a signal, let's press pause. So I wouldn't see any, any active work that I would need to necessarily be doing until I get a signal from the applicant, okay, we're, we're ready to go. But I don't, I'm not going to speak to what, you know, would happen in Woodfin and what they would be doing as the processing is the term that was used last night.
And she can't speak to what's going on in Woodfin, but I want to go back to and look at the email. We are working on a few details to respond to your comments. Please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back with you. That's the email she's talking about. He's telling her right there, we're continuing to work on it. How is that putting it on hold? It's not. We had Ms. Eisenhower testify, and I know I'm running, running on time here, so I'm going to just, we talked about this during the opening. She didn't consider it being placed on hold either. How could she? He literally says, we're continuing to work on the application and respond to your specific comments. What did Mr. Day say about it? No, I just did not want to be on the next agenda for the planning board. It's two weeks away. He has to respond to her comments. You heard him. He's busy. He's got a lot of projects. Did HS Robin Hood ever tell you to place it on hold or authorize you? No, we were still working on it. And again, did you, and it sounds like you did, but you continued to actually work on the site plan after Ms. Eisenhower sent the May 2021 email, correct? We did. In fact, that was where the change came about, the October submittal. Consistent with his email, Ms. Eisenhower, don't put it on the agenda. We're working to respond to your comments. What happened next? The October 2021 revised site plan that addressed each of the comments that Ms. Tuck, Ms. Eisenhower both testified to adequately addressed those comments. How was it placed on hold? It wasn't. It wasn't. Argument number four. This goes to their claim that the emails from Mr. Day and the transmittal letters from Mr. Day with the revised site plans supersede, in the language used, supersede the May 17th, 2021 application, meaning they're new applications and all of a sudden the May 17th, 2021 does not exist. But what are the facts on that? Testimony in the record from Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck is that they treated these as revised site plans. They did not treat them as new applications. The evidence in the record is that every single revised site plan referred back to the May 14th, 2021 revised site plan. You heard from Ms. Tuck yesterday, if they're new applications, you have to pay a new fee. Did the town ever request a fee? No. Did HS Robin Hood ever pay more than one fee? No, because they weren't new applications. They were revised site plans. They're part of that same process in the guiding principles of the back and forth. They're part of that process that Gaston refers to with revised site plans to respond to the comments and questions from the town. You heard Ms. Tuck, too, testify about it. The language he used wasn't great. It's confusing. Ms. Tuck, though, testified the language is often confusing. She sees it all the time. People say submittal. People say application. People say site plan. It's just common. People don't use the right terminology. And Mr. Day is not a lawyer. He's an engineer. We have it in this case. Recess, adjourn, all that, they get confused. I've said application. It happens. That doesn't mean you can ignore the evidence in the record that every single site plan contained, referred back to May 2021. That doesn't mean you can ignore the evidence of record that the town never requested a new application fee. That doesn't allow you to ignore the evidence in the record that there was only one zoning compliance permit application ever submitted in this case. And that was on May 17th of 2021. What else? All of Chris Day's emails came before December 21st, 2021. So even if you could ignore the evidence of the record and said, we'll ignore the fact that there was no zoning compliance permit application ever filed other than one. We'll ignore the fact that the town never requested or required any additional fees. We'll ignore the fact that the, each site plan refers in the revision block to the May one. Even if we ignored all that, what's the significance of that? It's not significant. You heard Ms. Tuck testify to that. All those emails and all those revised site plans occurred before the December 21st, 2021 amendment to the code. So even if they were new, they would still be under the old version. But again, to even get to that analysis, you have to ignore so many undisputed facts that are in the record. And this was part of Ms. Tuck's testimony originally, too. When she testified about it, I don't know that fundamentally it matters because the standards that were in place at the October application are the same standards that were in place in the May application. That was her response to questions initially from Mr. Noor about, well, there were multiple applications. What's the effect of that? Well, I don't know if it matters. But again, to get to even that point, you have to ignore the evidence, multitude of evidence in the record. So that's argument four. Were the October, November, and December 2021 revised site plans new applications? No, they weren't. No one intended them to be. No one understood them to be. The town didn't think they were. HS Robin Hood didn't think they were. Again, the only party in this room that says they were is the party that was not actually involved in the process. Which brings us to the fifth argument. The proposed development constitutes a group development because, and there's two components. The October 18th, 2022 site plan depicts more than one building. And the potential short-term rental component transforms the development into a hotel or motel, which falls outside the definition of a dwelling. So that's where the second question and the two determinative questions comes into play. Does a single building with three or more residential dwelling units constitute a permitted use under the pre-December 2021 zoning ordinance? That goes to Ms. Tuck's first determination. A revised site plan that consolidates all of the residential units and amenity areas into a single building would not be defined as a group development. It would instead be classified as a multifamily building. Where does she get that from? Well, she told you last night, I took it just from the plain language of the ordinance. It says group development, two or more buildings. It's that simple. A revised site plan that consolidates all residential units into many areas in a single building would not be defined as a group development. Why? Again, it says two or more buildings. Single building is not a group development. She also talked about the definition. Two or more, two or more principal structures. Again, you have to look at the guiding principles. You have to give the effect to those words. A group development is two or more. So how does a single building constitute a group development? It doesn't. She also went on to say, as a multifamily building, the use is classified as a permitted use, provided all other technical standards are satisfied. Where'd that come from? Came directly from section 52, 54 to 49 of the Mountain Village District Ordinance. Says it right there. Permitted uses, dwellings multifamily. There's no analysis she had to do. She turns to the ordinance and the ordinance says the answer right there. A single building with multiple dwelling units constitutes a permitted use because it's a multifamily dwelling unit. That's consistent with the definitions of dwelling, dwelling unit, and dwelling multiple family. Dwelling multifamily means a dwelling containing three or more dwelling units. A dwelling means a detached building designed or used exclusively as a residence or, and this is key, or a sleeping place. Petitioners kept overlooking that, or, or a sleeping place, but does not include boarding house or lodging house, motels, hotels, tents, or cabins. And dwelling unit means a group of rooms constituting all or part of a dwelling which are arranged, designed, used, or intended for use exclusively as living quarters for one family. She made those determinations based on the plain languages of the ordinance. Petitioners actually don't challenge those determinations. In fact, they're expert agrees with Ms. Tuck. So if there's a condominium building of 110 units with no short-term rentals, would you agree it would be a dwelling? A dwelling, a multifamily. It would be a multifamily dwelling, correct? Correct. That's their expert testimony. So if the town comes in and says short-term rentals aren't permitted, you would agree that this is, that this now is a multifamily dwelling? That's correct. And that is a permitted use under the Mountain Village ordinance, is it not? In my reading of the ordinance, it is. He's agreeing with Ms. Tuck. He's agreeing with those first two determinations in her letter. That a single building that consolidates the dwelling units into, consolidates all the dwelling units is not a group development that constitutes a multifamily dwelling and is a permitted use. That's their expert testimony. So how do they try and get around it? Well, they say the site plan doesn't show a single building. Again, though, that's out- Again, though, that's outside the framework of Ms. Tuck's determination. Ms. Tuck's determination was made on September 30, not October 18, when the site plan was made. But regardless, what does the site plan show? It talks about a single building. A single building. There's one building in the building summary. There's building notes refers to building, and it says the residential structure. What did, what did Ms. Tuck have to say? The applicant revised the plan to combine or consolidate all the units into a single building, multifamily building. That was her testimony. When she was asked, "Well, how do you know that? What's the proof?" Well, it says it on the, it says it on the site plan. And it's stamped. They are under an ethical obligation to tell what they, to represent accurately what's on that plan. They're representing a single building. This is a testimony of Mr. Corden. This goes back again to the fact of in September of 2022, when they were told that it would be a group, group development if it contained multiple buildings. What did H.S. Robin Hood do now that it's received confirmation from both Mrs. Tuck and Mr. Henning that if they submit a revised site plan on October 18? We submitted a revised site plan consolidating the development into a single building. What did Mr. Day say about it? It's identifying the building. On the August middle, you'll see that every structure had multiple, we had multiple structures on the previous middle. They all had their own individual circle number to identify them, as here, we only have one identified building. That's Mr. Day who's, who's signed and stamped this, who's under a professional ethical obligation to accurately reflect what's in the site plan. Yesterday, you heard from Mr. Waddle, the architect who assisted with the site plan. We were instructed to address the, to address H.S. Robin Hood's comments, which was to consolidate this into a single building. We did that. He even testified all about the North Carolina Building Code and why this is a single building under the Building Code. It's all heated, conditioned. It actually is substantially smaller in size than what's allowed, given the type of building Again, you've heard testimony from Mr. Day, who assisted in preparing the site plan. You heard testimony from Mr. Waddle, who prepared, assisted in preparing that site plan, who's a licensed architect of 10 years, who did it in accordance with the North Carolina Building Code. You heard testimony from Mr. Corden, who was the one that instructed Mr. Waddle and Mr. Day what to do about consolidating it into one building. You heard testimony from Ms. Tuck about what her understanding was, based on the conversations she was having with H.S. Robin Hood. Everyone says it's one building. Again, the only party in this room that's saying it's not one building is the party that was not part of the process, that was not part of the communications. Everyone that was part of this process and communications has unacquately said it's a single building. CRLU again is saying it's not a single building, but again, we look back to their October 2022 newsletter. These were their words. All capitals. That's not from H.S. Robin Hood. We didn't say in all capital letters, "One very large building." Those are their words. October, just days before they filed their appeal. It's now showing one very large building. When Ms. Bernstein, who was their expert, testified, she couldn't tell you it was more than one building in her professional capacity even.
And can you, and I can, okay. Can you definitively say that it's more than one building?
Uh, I believe, uh, we, we would need more information, I think, to, to, to understand what's going on, but, but when you, when we, when I, when I look at all of these plans and everything that's been provided, I felt like it was intended to be multiple buildings.
That was your, it sounds like that's your gut sense, but you can't state definitively it's one of the other.
So I guess I may add, so in your professional opinion, in professional opinion, you would say you would need more information. In your personal opinion, you're saying you don't think it's one building. If I'm correct, understanding you?
I think that is correct.
Does that answer your question?
If you receive.
So again, to reach a decision, the decision in this case has to be based on substantial competent evidence. Substantial competent evidence in this case is a single building. Mr. Day, Mr. Waddle, Ms. Tuck, Mr. Corden. The only evidence presented by the petitioners is equivocal. She can't say if it is or not. That's the single building argument. They also try to argue that the short-term rental component somehow takes this outside the definition of a dwelling. Well, dwelling means a detached building designed or used exclusively as a residence. And again, Mr. Green sat up there during their case and focused on used exclusively as a residence. If it's not a residence, it's, it's not a dwelling. But he failed to keep reading and say, "Or sleeping place." Again, you have to give effects to the words actually used. It doesn't say residence, comma, residence or sleeping place. And then it goes on to say, "But does not include boarding houses or lodging houses, motels, hotels, tents, or cabins." What did Ms. Tuck have to say about potential use of short-term rentals? Short, her testimony, "Short-term rentals are dwelling units." What did Ms. Eisenhower have to say about it? This again goes to December 21, 2021. This email also confirms that short-term rentals are allowed in the Mountain Village District. That's the information that the H.S. Robin Hood was receiving as of December 2021. What's also important, and it goes to the guiding principles, is that Woodfin's ordinance, the one in effect in May of 2021, actually has its own section dealing with short-term rentals. Short-term rental in that provision, again, this was in effect in the old ordinance, specifically defines short-term rental. It says, "Short-term rental, STR, means the renting of property for a period of less than 30 days for overnight stays wherein the owner does not reside in the home." Get it? It's right there. It's in the ordinance. A clear definition of short-term rental, where the owner does not reside in the home. Why is that important? Again, it doesn't have to be the permanent residence. It's a sleeping place. Why else is it important? Again, there is a clear definition of short-term rental. Where does that definition appear? In the list of exclusions from dwelling. It's not there. It's a specifically defined term in the zoning code that's not listed in the list of exclusions. The list of exclusions is specific. Boarding house, lodging house, motels, hotels, tents, or cabins. It doesn't say, comma, and short-term rentals. Again, going back to the guiding principles, why is that important? North Carolina Court of Appeals case. Furthermore, court should give effect to the words actually used in a statute and should neither delete words used nor insert words not used in the relevant statutory language. Yet you can't insert words. It's clear. Short-term rental, which is a specifically defined term in the ordinance in effect in May of 2021, is not included in the exclusion of what constitutes dwelling. What does the law say? You can't now insert it. You can't. That's an abuse of discretion. What else does the law say about that argument? You heard Mr. Terrell testify to this. North Carolina General Statute specifically says, "When adopting regulations under this article, a local government may not use a definition of building, dwelling, dwelling unit, bedroom, or sleeping unit that is inconsistent with any definition, definition of those terms in another statute or in a rule adopted by a state agency, including the State Building Code Council." Okay? Well, what does the definition of dwelling mean under the North Carolina General Statute? It says, "Any building, structure, manufactured home or mobile home or part thereof used and occupied for human habitation or intended to be so used includes any outhouses and appurtenances belonging thereto or usually enjoyed therewith. For the purpose of Article 12 of this chapter, the term does not include any manufactured home, mobile home, or recreational vehicle if used solely for a seasonal vacation purpose." So the only thing the general statute's excluding is a manufactured home, mobile home, or recreational vehicle that's used solely for seasonal vacation purposes. It says nothing about excluding short-term rentals in a condominium building. And again, Mr. Corden sat there and testified, "What's the purpose of this? What's the plan? To build luxury condominiums for sale to individual owners. It's the owners then who will have the right, if permitted, to have short-term rentals." Short-term rentals aren't permitted? That's fine. So their position that somehow the short-term rentals takes it out of the definition of dwelling not only contravenes the plain language of Woodfin's ordinance, it contravenes the definition of dwelling in the North Carolina General, uh, General Statute. But what did they do to try and say somehow the short-term rentals constitute a hotel? Well, they relied on the Planner's Dictionary. You can't rely on the Planner's Dictionary when the ordinance says what it says, when it's clear in the ordinance. You can't even go to the Planner's Dictionary. But let's take a look. What does the Planner's Dictionary say? It says hotel, and then it cross-references extended stay hotel and motel. It says hotel residential. See also extended stay hotel. What it does not cross-reference is housing short-term rental. Hotel motel are not cross-referenced with short-term rental. Doesn't say, see short-term rental. It says, see hotel. Why is that important? Their own expert testified why that's important. So would you agree with me, the Planner's Dictionary, where there is a specific term that is related to another term, the dictionary cross-references those terms together? Yes. So if a hotel or motel was related to a short-term rental, the Planner's Dictionary would tell you so by cross-referencing the terms. It didn't. In fact, it says housing. What does Planner's Dictionary say? Housing short-term rental. Any dwelling. That's how it starts off. Simply put, the fact that there may be short-term rentals, we don't even know yet. That's not even part of this process. But the fact that there's short, may be potential for short-term rentals doesn't make a luxury condominium building into a hotel. It doesn't make it into a motel. It's a condominium building. It's a residential building where the owners get to choose how they want to use it. So this gets us back to Ms. Tuck's determinations. Again, they are, "A revised site plan that consolidates all the residential units in an amenity area into a single building would not be defined as a group development." She based that on the plain language of the statute. Group development means two or more. She said it would be classified as a multifamily building. As a multifamily building, the use is classified as a permitted use. She turned right to 54, 249, says permitted uses, dwellings multifamily. And then she said, "The review of the revised site plan would be ministerial in nature, based on the rules in place at the time of the application." That goes to the first, uh, four arguments that we addressed early on. The application was properly submitted. The form was complete. The site plan was there. The intake was, they took it in. They said it was complete. The only people to say that these determinations are incorrect are CRLU. I think it's important to remember, going back to the first day. Why was CRLU created? This is from their Articles of Organization. And it says, "To prevent any other developer from building on the steep slope property by any legal means." The steep slope property, that's referring to this property. Since 2016, their goal has been to prevent any developer from building on a steep slope property. That is their stated goal in their Articles of Organization. How do they achieve that goal? They achieve it through a legal campaign. This is from their September 2, 2022 newsletter. This newsletter was before Ms. Tuck even issued her determinations, and they were already talking about a legal campaign. So again, what were those determinations? This is it. She relied on the language of the ordinance, and she relied on the facts that came out through the process. Yes, it was lengthy, but that's part of the process. And the fact that we were working with the town to address inconsistent positions taken by them, the law says you cannot prejudice the developer. For those reasons, we'd ask that you affirm each determination in Ms. Tuck's September 30, 2022 letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Portman.
I didn't know if there were questions, I guess, first, if that.
I don't know that they could ask you any questions about.
Oh, because it's not a motion. Okay. Fair enough. Okay.
Dinner, we find, I think Mr. Noor would have the opportunity. I think everyone after their case in chief would, had agreed to put on their closing. Uh, Mr. Noor does have the burden, so he has the ability to put on rebuttal evidence. But we may want to do that after dinner.
And, and what I'm suggesting is exactly that.
Okay.
I won't be more than, I don't know, I think my closing is 45 minutes. I think I'll be shot at that. So that's how much time I have.
All right. So based upon what Mr. Noor is saying, it's going to be more than 10 minutes.
It would be more than 10 minutes.
Okay. So then let's take a good point at this, it's a good point right now to take a 20-minute break. So we're going to recess for 20 minutes. We'll come back by that clock at, uh, 7:10. Okay, so we are in recess.
I don't, at that point, no. Other points.
This is good. This will help me.
Is there some information about the process?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right. Mr. Golden is going to give us a little opening statement, and this.
Right.
This probably helps for us. Forty-six. Talks about opening deliberation.
Yeah, that's for you.
Yes.
Yeah, that's for him. It's, it's just about the process. It even, it even says in here how to present a motion, sample motions, a motion to approve or a motion to deny. Freezing.
I was expecting, I was going to argue a question. I love the question.
I, well, I spooked.
They get him a tea, and then I pick him.
Five or seven.
Yes.
You know, whatever they do, I didn't, you know, they...
I just don't think it's true.
I bet, that's good.
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 I'm sure they have.
You got about 14.
That's why I was going to say, you want to secure it for my revolver.
Well, that's why you're doing this.
You want to count the pages?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, something good though, our...
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 Because that part of the...
Oh, there it was.
So we must have...
Can we ask what the process is?
Do they liberate in front of us?
That'll be really, really interesting. I mean, I just find this such a huge, high order, it's a huge...
I keep, I really have a hard time not standing up going, hey, what?
It's a byproduct, and it is, it's after you have...
I just wanted to get just...
So they would have to pay.
Appropriate.
I think that's a reason why.
It's a different sort of...
Basically, you would start with the...
If all had the process, you're simply...
I'm sure I saw this here in the...
He said that he would be...
I'm really glad I'm asking.
I think so, but what you're writing in the sites, the national...
Yes.
I'm still into all these sports, maybe having travelers.
One's a problem for another, for a problem.
And that's how it...
She...
It'd surprise me if they wanted you to...
I missed a few dinners on Wednesday.
That's the hardest one.
Sometimes it was standing next to them, and I would go over and say, Sarah, what are you doing?
But, but it's crazy.
Since I got married, I've seen her water.
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 Sometimes she's staying, and I grew up with that, and said, I need a plane, and when I know the...
You know, everyone has a class, and everybody else...
Oh, your YouTube, you don't really have your YouTube channel.
Your son will be all enough.
Or not, it's quite.
Well, he has...
The spirit is strong.
Now I ask, do you want to...
Because since I got the...
Of course, as a period is strong.
I had a golf...
I'm sure the way about our praise, like it's just...
It's more about making sure he's...
You can still stay alive, so it's definitely not drugs, they know.
Yeah. It's like, I don't need that schedule. I want to do it.
Usually, I see him in breaking here doing like that, because I have a lot of partners who usually...
And she's always saying the same.
And she can't take a woman out of the bitch.
I'm sure I've tried, I've actually tried to, they just...
I know they have to ask them, but...
Yeah, I'm sure it's not a night thing, that's exactly what you do.
Especially if you're, if you're smart, you try to slowly avoid them.
Which means that you want to get anything like a drink or not, or your last breath.
Like, very certain...
They were there, they were still turning his place, they called phones for now, didn't they?
Yes.
This week's sound, it's...
I'm trying a lot, I'm trying to...
I'm going to miss the first half. You want us to count, kick it? Where do you want it to be? Where do you count them to be?
They can have this thing pulled out.
Oh, I'm not behind.
I'm relying on you to have no...
Oh, I'm sorry, she's...
Some, that will not be for me.
Okay. I've learned so much from being here.
I feel like I have been fairly predictive of the time that I will take.
Yes, oh, yes, you have.
Sometimes you never know.
No, you just don't know. You're absolutely right. And you need to do what you need to do.
It's a long, it's a long, long process.
I know, we are all excited for it to be done.
We could have all been in it.
I was trying to see where the air vent is, but it must hit the back wall or something because it's freezing. You can feel it. And I don't see any vents anywhere.
I think they're back there, but it's, I don't...
Oh, here.
Yeah, right, right, on the ground. So they're just blowing up. Yeah, they're blowing up. Excuse me.
Thanks. I don't think you're supposed to say that in a public place.
Blowing up? Isn't that horrible?
Horrible.
Okay, Mr. Noor.
Oh, gosh.
Mr. Golden, you good to go?
Yeah, I'm ready to roll.
It's a brilliant meeting. Back to order, please. Everybody could take their seats. And I would like to remind everybody, if you could please make sure your phones are on vibrate, so we don't have any interruptions to the case tonight. With that being said, everybody is here. I guess, Mr. Noor, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now is our opportunity for our rebuttal. This is our response to the arguments that you just heard, the testimony that was presented by H.S. Robinson. And as I was sitting through the closing, a lot of what I was hearing reminded me, and I don't know if you will be familiar with them, but there was an old TV personality called Paul Harvey. He did this whole segment that would talk about a story that everyone thought they knew, or a story that you'd been told, and then presented all of the other things that you didn't know or hear about. So that at the end of it, you felt like, and you understood, "Wow, there was so much that I didn't hear before, but now I know now." I think that's a lot of what this rebuttal will be. You heard things.
I'm sorry, timeout.
Oh, no.
I am so...
We forgot about her.
I didn't even see it.
I apologize. Yes, we did. So, we'll have to take a step back.
Yeah, we did.
So, when we are set up with the court reporter, Mr. Nora, could you please... Not long, but it was a really good story.
Fifty-seven seconds. Not long. But...
Right. Are we not recording, or were we...
And that's the rest of the story for the record, so...
That's exactly right. That's what he said. That's exactly right. Oh.
No, 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 that is on me.
No, I apologize.
Yeah, we should have all seen.
He sits right in front of us, and we missed him.
Twenty of us.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, thank you. I think we're all just excited to be done.
It could have been seventeen minutes into it.
Oh, no.
So, I, I, I'm not gonna go back in the record for that, you know, anecdote, but I wanna emphasize, that's what this rebuttal is. It's about providing you with the rest of the story. And so, what I'd like to start with is what your job is. Okay? And we have this from state law. When hearing an appeal, the board may reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify the decision from and shall make any order, requirement, decision, and determination that ought to be made. The board shall have all the powers of the official who made the decision. Every quasi-judicial decision shall be based upon competent material and substantial evidence in the record. You are the zoning administrator. You get to decide what these things mean. You have all the powers of Ms. Tuck. You have heard the testimony. You have heard the arguments about what happened. But what happened isn't what the ordinance required. Who are the people we're dealing with? One of the things that ended their arguments with were, again, they keep citing to this old, this old Articles Incorporated, not even the most recent one. But who are the opponents here? First is this, Ms. Bernstein. Ms. Bernstein and her husband Alex live with their son immediately across the street from this proposed development. They love where they live. They've invested their time, their money into their home. They care deeply about it. C.R.L.U. It's a group that is committed to responsible development. It cares about steep slope property and protecting our mountains. They have taken the time and the money to hire me, to ask me to be here, to make their argument on their behalf because of how passionate they are about this. When we look at the arguments and we look at the principles, one of the things, I took a picture of those guiding principles, and this is one of the things where we agree. Courts, and that, in this case, means you, give effect to the words actually used in the statute. Look at the words that are used. Another sort of thing that came into my mind as I was listening to this rebuttal was, um, my son is six, and so, right now, we are learning how to read. And part of learning how to read means also looking at the pictures. And so, we'll be going across little sentences, and he'll read a word that's what's the picture, but not what's in front of him. And so much of what I've heard tonight is essentially asking you to do the same. Don't worry about the word dimensions. Scales enough. Says dimensions, doesn't say scale. Says this, doesn't say that. They want you to not read some of the words. They want you to substitute in certain things rather than reading what the ordinance says. They also pointed to a principle, the Westmore City, uh, case, uh, that's, which encourages you to embrace flexibility. But here's what that case says. This is from the court. But our decision does not impose such a requirement because our holding is limited to the unusual facts of this case involving the overly restrictive application of a vague ordinance to assign relocation that was mandated by a D.O.T. program. That is not this case. Court itself saying it only applies to those kind of cases. So, again, what do we do? We read the ordinance. That's how you've been trained. The ordinance is where we start. It's what the requirements are. So, what are the requirements? All applications for a zoning compliance permit shall be accompanied by, and then we go to, we have a list of the things that are required, and the locations and dimensions of the proposed building or alterations. That's what the, uh, the ordinance says. That's Chapter fifty-four. That's in Article two. That's what it says. But they don't want you to read dimensions. They want you to read scale. Doesn't say scale, says dimensions. Well, let's even look at the application. Attach a site plan or draw plans accurately and to scale. Period. Scale. Then it says, "Show dimensions of lot and located structures by dimensions of property." Two separate things. Scale and dimensions. The ordinance says dimensions. The application says dimensions. They all say dimensions. This is not ambiguous. This is required. Their own expert, Mr. Terrell. So, just to be clear again, do you agree with the positions asserted by the petitioners in Mr. Green's report that the May twenty-twenty-one site plan did not indicate the dimensions of the proposed buildings? That is correct. Now, he goes on to say, "The only time you see that is in construction drawings for buildings." But he concedes the dimensions aren't there. Now, Mr. Day wouldn't even agree with the second sentence of Mr. Terrell. "The only time you see it is in construction drawings," because how do we know that? His own plans. These aren't construction drawings. This is the August submission. His words, dimensions. He provides the dimensions. We don't have to guess what dimensions are. And then his testimony. Mr. Day's testimony. You are familiar, this is the August application site plans that were attached. Correct? Answer, "Yes." I do, "Yes." And in that, you specifically identified dimensions, don't you? Answer, "I did, yes." You go to the bottom there. You did not list what you identified as dimensions in any other, any of the previous site plans, did you? Answer, "I did not." The ordinance says dimensions. Their expert, Mr. Terrell, conceived the dimensions weren't provided. Mr. Day says he didn't provide them. And we don't need to guess what a dimensions are because he provided them later on. They're just not there. We also, again, going back to the ordinance, what does it say? "The application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article." That's what fifty-four thirty-five says. That's Article two. Fifty-four dash thirty-seven, also Article two. Where applicable, the zoning administrator shall not issue an application for a zoning compliance permit for any use, building, or proposed use, proposed for location inside the incorporated municipality without written preliminary approval of any proposed water supply. Article two. Says you don't even get the application unless you have provided the preliminary approval from any proposed water supply. Now, you'll recall, they've said, "Well, that means well and septic." Where? Where does it say well and septic? Nowhere. What are we doing again? We're reading things into the ordinance. What did the law say? No, we read what the ordinance says. And it also says, "Any proposed water supply." Not just well, not just municipal water, any. That's what it says. And it's not just there, it's also in fifty-four three eighteen. The design plan package, again, what they're providing with the application, shall include approvals for the proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution centers. This is so critical, it's why Mr. Green said, "This is the foundation. If you don't have water, you don't have sewer, you don't have a plan. You don't have a project. Why should we go through all of this effort if you don't have those?" So, with that, again, in Article two language, what did, what did you all think about this? When Mr. Terrell testified, the chairman asked him, "So, I guess I'm confused as to why you, you're, you say it is not, if it clearly says these two things, Woodfin Water is a public water supplier, the witness." Well, it looks, well, let's look at what it really says. It says, "The zoning administrator shall not issue an application." And then he gets to the end, citing back to the ordinance, "If you keep reading, 'without written preliminary approval of any proposed water supply and sewer disposal facility.'" And what's his next sentence? Well, at this point, you know, once you're in the municipality, you don't need written approval. So, again, don't read the ordinance that says you have to have this written approval. You're in the municipality, you don't need it. Are we following the ordinance, or are we just doing what we want? And I think that answer was somewhat unsatisfactory because then Mr. Deroni asked as a follow-up. So, my question kind of stepped out originally that I was trying to look for in here, but it's made this statement in here where it says, "Where applicable, the design package shall include approvals for proposed water and sewer, or sanitary sewer and water distribution systems from the appropriate state and local agencies." And then you ask, "So, wouldn't the approvals still be required, though?" Mr. Terrell? Ultimately, yes. So, but let's, but how does that make sense? So, up here, you don't need written approvals. But, oh, well, ultimately, you would. But what does the actual ordinance say? Sorry. Says you need the approvals. You don't need to look to Mr. Terrell, look to the ordinance. Ms. Hoffman, you also had a follow-up on that question. What I'm trying to say is, it says, "Such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance and in this article." And you say it's Article two. And then Article two lists a whole lot of stuff that needs to be complied with. Mr. Terrell's response? That is correct. The water requirement is in Article two. Urban design guidelines. Specifically say, "Applications." The first word in the sentence. And it says that they shall be accompanied by urban and architectural design guidelines to be prepared by the applicant. That's the zoning ordinance, Chapter fifty-four. It requires it to be included with the application. Would you hear from Mr. Corden? And your testimony was that you did not retain an architect until June of twenty-twenty-two, correct? Answer, "That's right." So, it's not included. You didn't have an architect do it before, then it didn't exist before that time. His answer? "We had an architect engaged for in June of twenty-twenty-two." Yeah. There's no architect in May of twenty-twenty-one. What's Mr. Day say about this? Again, it says, and let's look back at what the, what the ordinance actually says. It says, "Design guidelines to be prepared by the applicant, to be prepared by the applicant." What does Mr. Day say? He did. Question. As of this time, though, any of those building notes that you included, or your office included, in that site plan hadn't been designed by an architect, correct? Answer, "No." I put these notes on the plan. I pulled the notes from some verbiage that I got from the town or potential mountain village ordinance. Next question. But again, not designed by an architect. No, no, they were from language that I was provided, and I, and I instructed my staff to include them. Essentially, verbatim citation of the ordinance that's dumped into the site plan. The ordinance, from information that I got. He didn't design anything. He copy and pasted language in the ordinance and put it in the site plan. Those are not design guidelines. What's more, they're supposed to be architectural design guidelines. He's not an architect. They don't have an architect. And this is something the ordinance says should be accompanied with the applications. I've thrown up here, this is one forty-three, seven fifty-five. It's state law. Law of the land. It's what the General Assembly has said has to occur. And it says, "If a permit, application, is placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months or more, or the applicant fails going forward to respond to comments or, or, 'provide additional information reasonably requested by the local or state government for a period of six consecutive months or more,' the application review is discontinued in the development regulations in effect of the time of permit processing as you should apply to the application." These are not my words. This is what the General Assembly requires. This is also part of, uh, this is the basis of permit choice. So, one of the things, and forgive me, that I wanna point out about that is, they, they, they showed you, and I guess I'll show it here. This is what they showed you during their portion. This was the quote from Ms. Eisenhower's email. It says, "Do you have a landscaping plan? The ordinance requirements are as follows." And somehow, they tried to argue to, "Well, she doesn't technically say you gotta provide a pension." Well, let's look up to the rest of the email. This is the top of it. You looked over your site, have a few follow-up questions. Required additional information? And then she lists them out, one, two, three, four. She says it's required. This is Ms. Eisenhower's testimony. So, you, question, "So, you told them we need a landscape plan, and it has to be a plan that's prepared by a licensed landscape architect? That's additional information that I need as part of this application, correct?" Answer, "Correct." Those clips they showed you, part of the story. What's the rest of the testimony? What did she say after that? Okay. So, you did say it was complete. One of those clips you got had her saying it was complete. Here's the rest of her testimony. You said it required additional information, and then you listed the additional information that was needed, correct? Answer from Ms. Eisenhower, "Correct." Yes. And I'm throwing up R.D. nine. This is a ca, this is category four, the additional information you requested from the developer, correct? Answer, "Correct." And here it says, correct me if I read it wrong, "Do you have a landscaping plan? The ordinance requirements are as follows." Did I read that correct? Answer, "Yes." And then we go down to the bottom. So, of the additional information that you requested, a portion of it was required by the ordinance, correct? Answer, "Correct." She didn't say it was complete. That's her testimony right there. It's required in the ordinance. She asked for it. State law says they have to provide it if they want to lock in their, the old rules. Back to Ms. Eisenhower's testimony. Where in the record is there a landscaping plan by a licensed architect between May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one and six months after? Which would be November seventeenth. I don't believe there's a landscape plan by a licensed architect, correct? Ms. Eisenhower's testimony. So, in six months of you requesting the information, the landscaping plan by a landscaping architect, none was provided. Answer, "Correct." And you heard Ms. Eisenhower's testimony, that between, this is Ms. Tuck's response, "Between May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one and November seventeenth of twenty-twenty-one, she did not receive a landscaping plan certified by a landscaping architect, correct?" Ms. Tuck's response, "That is correct. But we did receive information from the applicant, not the information you asked for, but you got information." What did Mr. Corden say about it? What did Mr. Corden say about it? Question. One of the things I would like to ask you about, you had also mentioned that you retained a landscape architect in May or April of 2022, correct? Answer, might have been a little later into the summer after we had more design done. Question, okay. Answer, so that might have officially been working in July or August period. They couldn't have even produced the information that was requested because they didn't have a landscape architect until the following. And Mr. Corden? But you did not, you did not submit a landscape plan that was designed by a state licensed architect within six months of being requested. Answer, that is correct. What did Mr. Day say?
They point to that October submission and say, well, there's, there's, you know, some green buffering there, some trees on that. What did, what did Mr. Day prepare to say? Question. So when you were testifying that the October plan included, I think you mentioned trees, depictions and buffers. That was work you did, correct? Answer, it was work that my office did with my oversight. And that is common for me to do a design, to do as a design professional, to show that compliance is achievable when we bring in the detailed plans. Question. But that wasn't done by a licensed architect, was it?
Answer, not yet. It's not what she asked for. It's also not really surprising. They knew this. This is the email from their attorney to the town where he says, but obviously we will need to update drawings so that everything calls for it by the MB ordinance. This is in February of 2022. They know they don't have everything. And one of the things that you've been, has been argued to you, is that, well, this is just an ad for back and forth. You come in with something on top of the town, they come back, go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Couple of things about that. Just because that's what Woodfin has done, doesn't mean that's what's in the ordinance. And we all know that we do what is in the ordinance. But more importantly, if you want to lock in the old rules, you, you could, you could choose to participate in that kind of process, the back and forth. But the risk you run when you do it is that if the rules change, you lose the protection of the old rules. So what do you have to do? Submit a complete application in order to lock in those old rules. That is what the Ashe County case will get to them. But that's why it matters. You have to submit the application. If you want the benefit of the old rules, you have to submit a complete application. You can go through the back and forth, but you don't get the benefit of those old rules. The other thing we talked about is the hold.
This is Ms. Eisenhower's testimony. Question. And we talked about how there was a request to hold the May submittal on May 18th, correct? Her answer, yes. Question. Where in the record of decision is there an email or other communication from Mr. Day asking that the application be taken off of hold and put back on agenda between May 18th, 2021 and November 18th, 2021? Answer, there is not one. Ms. Eisenhower answers to those questions. Question. Well, I'm referring to it, this, to his request to take off, to put it on hold. Between that time period and November 18th, 2021, where did he request to put it back on? Answer, he didn't. Mr. Day's words. Sometimes it's amazing what the trial and litigation process can bring out of us. Asked by his own attorney. Question. Your response was, please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back with it, correct? Answer, correct. Question. What was the purpose of writing that email? Answer, Mr. Day's answer. This was on May 17th and she had asked for many things and we needed to revise the plan that we need, that we needed to revise the plans for. And she was asking me if we wanted to be on the planning board meeting very next month. And so without even reaching out to my clients, I said, quote, no, put that one on hold. His words. Then he pauses and then says, no, not put it on hold. I said, please put it on the, please do not put it on the agenda. You can get back with me. He called it a hold and then he corrected himself because he knows this is, it's the He asked for it not to go on the agenda. He never asked for it to go back on within that six-month period. That's a hold.
One of the last arguments that we've got relates to the group developments in the hotels. You heard this at the end of their rebuttal. As if there were any question about whether this is going to be used for short-term rentals or not. This is their resolution recorded on the Register of Deeds website from their company. Whereas the sole member of the association, HS Robbins, Hood, Omer LLC, cast its vote to allow the real property to be used for the purpose of short-term rents. Their words. Their resolution. Something they provided to the town. Ms. Tuck's testimony about how short-term rentals are like hotels.
Typical characteristics of the short-term vacation rental include many different families coming in and out, correct? Yes. Regular basis turnover, correct? Answer, yes. Checking in maybe for one night, could be three nights, could be five nights, no minimum? Answer, yes. Or maximum amount of time, correct? Answer, correct. All right. Those types of characteristics are consistent with motels and hotels, are they not? You get to decide. What is the difference between this and 110 short-term vacation rentals that they say is in one building? It's a hotel.
It's also important, they, they threw up some testimony from Mr. Green. But Mr. Green actually said that his opinion about the multifamily dwelling only applied if they weren't used as short-term rentals. They also threw up the video. It's, it's, well, before I get to that, it is amazing to me in many ways how so much of their defense says, look at Article II, look at Article II, look at Article II, look at Article II, look at Article II. Where do they get the definition for short-term rental? Chapter 30. Not even in the zoning chapter. So we can't go anywhere else, but they, when they want to, can go to a different chapter to define things. The other thing that I think is interesting here, sort of gets back to where we started. Your role. When hearing an appeal, you all can reverse or affirm wholly or in part, or may modify the decision that is being appealed. You all get to decide. You are now the zoning administrator to make the decision. We can understand how, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for the people who work in the development field. I am one of them. I, sometimes I'm sitting where Mr. Goulden is advising boards, sometimes I'm sitting on a planning board, some, sometimes I'm advising staff. Everyone is trying to make the best decisions that they can. There is no dispute about that. But the purpose of these kinds of appeals are to say, sometimes as humans, we make mistakes. And this is the way to correct them. When we forget to require the dimensions, that's why you would reverse. When we forget to require that the water approvals come in, that is why you would reverse. When we forget to require, or people just don't respond to our requests for additional information, that is why you would reverse. All of these things are reasons and it has nothing to do with whether Ms. Tuck or Ms. Eisenhower are good or bad people. That is not what this is about. This is about people trying to do the best they can, but we're human and we make mistakes and we have appeals to correct those mistakes. Ultimately, though, responsibility here falls on the developer. You heard Mr. Corden. I asked him. All of the things we've covered, where are they? They're in the ordinance. He could have read them when they purchased the property. He testified to hiring legal counsel to advise them. It is there in black and white. You don't have to rely on the town. Read it. Provide what it asks for. That's your obligation. And it's particularly your obligation if you're wanting to lock in the old rules. 143-755. If a development permit applicant submits a permit. And it goes on, between the time development permit application was submitted, well, what does submitted mean? We know what it means. And the reason we know is because the courts have told us, this is the Ashe County case. In addition to practicing land use law, I'm also an environmental attorney. I'm very familiar with this kind of process. The reason why the Ashe County case, again, its words, not mine. We hold that the PID ordinance permit application submitted by Appalachian Materials was not, quote, submitted within the meaning of permit choice statutes until it was complete. That is what the court says. If you want to have submitted an application, it has to be complete. If it is not complete, it is not submitted and you do not get to lock in the old rules. The reason why it wasn't incomplete, again, the court says, going on.
Until it was complete on 29th February, 2016, when counsel for Appalachian Materials forwarded the air quality permit issued by DEQ on 26th February, 2016, to the planning director and demanded the PID ordinance permit be issued because only then did the application meet the requirements that in one and two. Those requirements are from the ordinance. That's just like what we've been talking about. Your ordinance requires dimensions. Your ordinance requires water approval. Your ordinance requires the landscape design features, guidelines, excuse me. Your ordinance requires those things. That's what they have to get in, in order for it to be complete. It is completely analogous to this situation.
They didn't provide all of the information required under your ordinance. They didn't respond with the information requested by Ms. Eisenhower. They have proposed a development that is a hotel because it has 110 short-term vacation rentals jammed into one building. That is not a multifamily dwelling. That is a hotel and that is not permitted. And these are the reasons why we appealed the determination. Ms. Bernstein, her husband, her son, they care deeply about this. They wouldn't be wasting their time on frivolous arguments. CRLU cares deeply about this and they care deeply about this community. And ultimately, why all this matters, and I said it in my closing before, was your commissioners write these ordinances. They amend these ordinances to make progress, to improve your community, to move the ball forward. And the only way that ball can move forward is when we all are required to comply with the same rules. And again, you only get to lock in the old rules, what does it say? If you submit an application and we know that means complete. If they wanted the old application, it had to be complete. It wasn't. They don't get the old rules. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nor.
Thirty-three minutes. So less than the forty-five.
Bingo.
Promised.
We have an hour and fifteen minutes. I don't recall that you had closed the evidentiary hearing the last time we were here. What would that do? Would that would prevent anyone else or from you all from asking any clarifying questions or having anyone answer any questions that you would have? Because there's only three witnesses here that have testified previously and the other ones aren't here, if you had questions for the architect, it's probably the best practice to, to close the, the evidentiary hearing now so that you all then will limit your discussions to what your recollection of the facts are without asking for any clarifying statements from any of the witnesses that are here. And I believe there's only three. Mr. Norris' client, Mr. Hennings' client and Mr. Portnoy's client, but only one of each. So that would be, that's my recommendation that you do that now, that you close the evidentiary part of the hearing and then I'll instruct you all on, Ms. Hanson.
If we close, I guess something that would be very helpful for me is to get a copy of a couple of these ordinances. If, I don't recall if they are in any of this already, but to get some of that written information.
Yeah, and I don't know what you're asking for, but I'm assuming we have the ordinance, because we've been referring to it, and so I would just ask councils, yeah, they're right there. Yeah.
Great. Okay.
I guess this question is concerning is, once we close it, are we allowed to ask questions?
No.
I don't think so. No, I agree. That's what I'm getting at.
Once we close it, can I, I want this before we close.
That's what I.
Yeah, you can have it. That's right. Well, I'll get it for you.
For that, I'll have, don't you have a question?
No.
No.
Saving money and want to deforest the planet. Thank you.
And Mr. Nor, if you can, don't mind, sorry, I'm gonna.
And once we close the evidentiary portion of this, we cannot ask questions like that, correct?
You can ask questions of that for me to say, hey, do you have the statutory reference 143-755?
Okay.
And what does it say? I can give you that statute to look at. I mean, that's what people were, were talking about. But you can't ask any of their witnesses any more questions if, even if you had a clarifying question that you tried to recall and you're like, hm, I don't remember. Sure would be nice to have Ms. Bernstein answer a clarifying question. Can't do it. Once that evidentiary hearing is closed. But in all fairness to all parties, because some of the witnesses aren't here to answer any of those clarifying questions, I would recommend that you close it.
Do I need a motion for that or is something I can just do?
No, I think you can just do that.
Okay. And then at this time, we're going to close the evidentiary portion of this hearing.
Good. All right. And so now, as everyone has, has talked about, it falls to you. And I will read some matter straight out of 160D, which is North Carolina's Development Regulations. Of course, appeals of administrative decisions made by the staff under this chap, chapter shall be made to the Board of Adjustment. You all are the Board of Adjustment. There's been an administrative decision, as you all determined last night, that September 30th letter. There's been an appeal to that matter. That comes to you in a quasi-judicial matter. You all are acting as a judge and a jury in this matter. It's quasi-judicial because the rules of evidence are a little more loose than they would be in a court proceeding, but you have to give each and every party the, the process that's due. And that is the right to present their case, cross-examine, cross, or confront and cross-examine witnesses, make opening and closing statements. And you've done that. Your guiding principle for what you are to do is the Board in hearing these facts, it's your duty to recall the facts as, as you recall them being presented from the witness stand. The Board shall determine contested facts and make its decision. When hearing an appeal, this Board, and this is, I'm just reading straight from the statute, may reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify the decision appealed from and shall make any order requirement, decision or determination that ought to be made. Basically, the Board, not basically, the Board shall have all the powers of the official who made the decision. Basically, you're stepping into the shoes of the individual who made the decision that's being appealed. We've got that. It's in the record of decision. You can refer back to what that determination was, that we talked about that. I read that definition to you yesterday, 160D 102 in paren 10 about the decision. And you can go back and look at the appeal. You've got the ability to do all of that. The Board is tasked with determining contested facts. And you all, if there are contrary facts, you all have the obligation to weigh the contrary facts. And it's not the quantity of evidence that you're looking at, it is the quality of evidence that you're looking at. So the fact that someone said the same thing over and over and over again with six different witnesses. So the fact that someone said the same thing over and over and over again with six different witnesses doesn't matter, right? That's quantity. You're looking at quality of the evidence that was presented, as you recall it from the testimony elicited from the witnesses. Each quasi judicial decision shall be based upon competent material and substantial evidence in the record. And I think what's important is in the record, right? You have seen the evidence that's been presented and the documents that have been submitted. Arguments of counsel. Not competent material, substantial evidence in the record. That's arguments. The briefs submitted by counsel, again, not competent nor material nor substantial evidence in the record. Any independent investigations that we did, again, not competent material, substantial evidence in the record. You all have to make your decision on the information that was presented to you, the documents that were submitted, and the testimony that was elicited from the witnesses, expert and or lay witnesses. When you are performing your duties in this appeal, the Board of Adjustment must make interpretations about the meaning of the language in the ordinance and how it applies to the particular situation based on the specific facts of this case. So it's going to be your duty to interpret the ordinance and apply the ordinance as you interpret it to the specific facts as you recall them. And again, those facts have to be competent, material, and substantial. When interpreting the ordinance, the best way to determine the intent is from the text itself. When an ordinance is clear and unambiguous, its plain meaning will be enforced. The board can look to definitions if you think that there is something that may not be as unambiguous as you would like it to. If it's defined, you can look at the definition in the ordinance. If it's not defined, you are permitted to consider other definitions that may have been presented from other sources, i.e. dictionaries. And so you may consider those. Your interpretation, though, however, when you are stepping into the shoes of the zoning administrator, or the planning director, or the town manager, depending on the situation, you have to base your decision on matters that are referred to in the ordinance. And so you will, in your discussions, please refer to the ordinance for the specific issues you're concerned with. If it's not in the ordinance, and you have to apply the plain text of what the ordinance is. If it's unambiguous, you can look to the definitions that are contained in the ordinance or consider secondary sources that have been introduced in the record. And so that would be your duties, your obligations, to act as if you were the zoning administrator at the time, making those decisions with reference to the language in the zoning ordinance. And please refer to the decision, the appeal. And what I did for your benefit with consultation with all the attorneys is I tried to, and you don't have to use this at all. I'm going to hand it out. I'm going to hand it to all the councils. I tried to, as they did in their closing arguments, kind of group things together so that it focuses where your attention needs to be. And in disclosure, I talked to all three of them and got input from everybody about what they all thought the issues were. These are my words, not theirs. Any similarity to what they have said was completely random. These are my words after I talked to everybody about these issues. And so I broke them apart, and I'll hand it to you all, and I'll hand it to each one of the attorneys. But as to two separate issues, issue one has a couple of sub-issues that you'll have to determine, and issue two. The way that I looked at it, issue one is the overarching principle of which ordinance applies. You have to go and make a threshold decision. Again, please, if this is not the way you see it, don't rely upon me. But you'd have to make a threshold decision as to the submission of that initial May 17th, 2021, application. That's part of whether it was properly or validly submitted under the ordinance that existed at the time it was submitted. And your decision would be to consider reversing Ms. Tuck's decision in her September 30th, 2022, letter. There's a couple of sub-parts to that that you can look at. Then it moves on to another sub-part of which ordinance applies, and that is looking at the applicability of the permit choice statute and whether or not the application was put on hold or whether there was a failure to respond to reasonable questions by the local government, whether the applicant failed to respond. So I've got those listed out. The second issue that I would have is just the use determination, and that is the single building consolidating all units into one building. Is it a group development, or is it something else? And it's going to be your duty to recall and consider all the facts. I will take notes on these papers, but please do not feel like you have to use it. But it may help focus. Yeah, and that's just for issue one. I'll hand out issue two. Thank you. And then I've got another issue to hand up. And Mr. Chairman, it would be your, well, it's your duty to kind of lead the discussion, and so you can run it however you would like. And if you have any questions, I do have, and I apologize, I did not make. John, I gave you two. So it's with the board now.
Okay. Mr. Gordon, Golden, I'd like to make a little statement, and I just want to make sure that you can correct me if I make a, say anything wrong with this statement. So I want to remind the board members that we are here to make this decision based upon the evidence that's been presented to us. Whether we agree or disagree with this project moving on forward, our personal opinions, whether we would like to see this project or not like to see it, has nothing to do with this, and this should be kept out of our decisions. This should be strictly a legal decision. I'll word it that way, not our personal choice. Is that okay, Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board members before we start this deliberation? And Ms. Hoffman gave me a statement to. Okay, I'm going to read this also. This sounds good. So this opening deliberation, "We will now begin deliberation of this request. As a reminder, the board is tasked with deciding if, based upon the evidence presented, this proposal meets the applicable standards, the decision cannot be based on the personal preference of the board members." I guess I'm sorry, repeating myself. Rather, it is based on standards and evidence. Board members are encouraged to reference the applicable standards and specific evidence in their deliberation. For this particular case, the board is asked to decide the items, let's see, does the record include competent, does the record include competent, relevant, and substantial evidence that fits these issues one and two? We'll word it that way. So that being said, we're going to move on to, and bear with me, I have not read this yet, so if everyone wants to take a moment and just read the, we'll start with issue one and item one of issue one. With regard to the administrative appeal, Mr. Golden, I'm allowed to read this out loud?
Yeah, yeah, you can read it out loud, for sure.
Issue one is which ordinance is apply, which ordinance applies. With regard to the administrative appeal from September 30th, 2022, letter of Shannon Tuck Town Manager Interim Planning Director concerning the Robin Hood Road Development, application within the town limits of the town of Woodfin, North Carolina, this board, based on its interpretation of the zoning on its May, affirm the decision wholly or partly, your first decision, wholly or partly, or modified decision. The ballot submission is number one. The decision that the application as of May 17th, 2021, was validity.
Validly.
Validly, thank you. Submitted pursuant to applicable provisions of the town's zoning in existence as of May 17th, 2021 should be affirmed or reversed in whole or part or modified due to. And then we'll note that if it's reversed, we'll determine when, if at all, any applicable, if at all, any application of HS Robin Hood was validity submitted. If affirmed, a valid plea, thank you. If affirmed, did any subsequent revisions of HS Robinson amount to new application? Okay, so I guess we'll, can open us up to discussion, and I guess I'm going to start from one side to the other and just ask. Give opinions.
I have the whole ordinance here.
Do we want to go down in order, or do we just have a group discussion?
I think we should have a group discussion.
And just to clarify, you know, the summary that you just reviewed is, again, a summary of the letter that's being appealed. So this September 30th letter has these same two points, okay? And it said on there, you know, so her decision was, on the first point, I agree, revise, blah, 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 having to do with the group development.
Okay.
And on the second point, I agree, the review would be ministerial in nature and would be based on the rules in place at the time of the May 17th, 2021, application. So those are the two. So they're in the opposite order here, but those, I think, are the ones that we need to specifically address. Okay.
And so that would be. RD 111.
Yeah, that's RD 111 and 112.
And then RD 152 and following.
I think I have different pages.
Oh, okay. Really? So, so RDs are different?
I have 128 and 129.
Well, that's a September 30th letter, and what is?
I think it's the same letter, just in a different place.
Part of, that's an exhibit of one of the other things.
Okay.
As opposed to, if you would go to the original. So RD 110 to 112 is the letter, and then RD 152 following is the appeal.
Yeah. One what?
152 is the beginning of the appeal.
Okay. So I guess then I'll open up the discussion as far as the validity of that. Was the application submitted correctly? We'll word it that way.
Correctly.
Was it a valid application?
So I think that goes to our favorite zoning ordinance, 5435. And we've heard multiple times the following quote, "All applications for a zoning compliance permit shall be accompanied by two sets of plans showing the dimensions and shade of the parcel to be built upon, the exact sizes, uses, and location of the parcel or buildings already existing, if any, and the locations and dimensions of the proposed buildings or alterations. The application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article. An application fee shall be charged for processing of each such application."
Okay.
And permits are valid for six months, beginning from the day issued.
And that is regarding the actual permit.
Correct.
Being handed out, not the application. So.
So if we take a couple of those, maybe one at a time, I mean, we can talk about the different pieces that that listed. The one that it states right in that first, that was 5435, you said?
Yep.
So in 5435, it says it shall, and so we'll be cautious of that word, but it's a shall, include the two sets of plans with dimensions. So if we're to go strictly by the word, it's dimensions, and dimensions can be, to their point, inferred from scale. But I think it actually even says more than just include the dimensions, but it says distances from.
Property launch.
Yeah, so it's sort of.
Not in the ones that were in effect back then. Maybe the ones in the new.
But we shouldn't be looking at that.
Not necessarily, but.
And in my opinion, we should be looking at the ones that were in effect when they put the application in.
It says, and the locations and dimensions of the proposed buildings or alterations. It does not say.
Okay, the location and dimensions of that.
Okay. So the locations, we definitely.
We have locations.
We have locations.
Let me just say, this is from the original plot plan, which has lots of little buildings and lots of little. Okay, okay, just wanted to be clear about that.
That was the original.
That's the original application.
Of the application.
So we're, I guess, we're in agreement that the locations were valid, and they were color-coded, we'll call it color-coded.
Locations may be, but I don't think the dimensions piece personally.
Well, that's the part, I guess, that's up for discussion, because that's the part we have to talk about, because I believe. Okay, go ahead. I believe that by drawing the drawing to scale is a very common practice and is used in many fields so that anyone could get dimensions at any point in time. And the statement that if they had put dimensions on every single building with a line would have been very difficult to read, and I would have to agree that it would be extremely confusing for anybody to look at the drawing that way.
It would be a mess.
Yes, so usually drawing to scale, I would believe that that would be acceptable to giving dimension, because anybody with, and I'll use Mr. Nor, I think Mr. Portnoy did bring a there's a specific engineer's rule. I believe it's like a triangle shape which has all the different scales, and they can roll it over, and you can get any dimensions from that, using that thing. So my opinion would be right now is that it was drawn to scale, which does show the dimensions. But.
I would agree with you on scale. If I was looking at a drawing that had many of the same building, I would expect that they would put dimensions on one of those and then call those out as the same, so that they aren't repeating the dimension. They could put it right on the side of either one of these so that you know how big that is without having to go figure it out. Because I think it would be, now you're relying on someone's ability to understand and read a scale to the people who are reviewing this application. I think that the intent of that requirement is so that the the staff that are reviewing that application have the ability to see what the dimensions are without having to figure it out.
And I would argue a combination of pieces there that, and what we've already heard argued about. You know, when an architect says it's one building, it's one building. Similarly, you know, we, different from me, the person in the job, actually doing the job for the town, has some training and education specifically toward reading these things. And so I, I also, my familiarity with things drawn in scale is that's so that you can then see what's on the map, and it's not taken up by all kinds of other miscellaneous stuff.
Right, right. I, yeah, yeah, you don't want to clutter, clutter the drawing.
These aren't. These aren't drawn for me to read specifically, they're drawn for the town, you know, planner and, and manager and et cetera to read and understand.
I believe there were also, there's a note on there that says, "These are not released for construction, these are only for application purposes." It was put on here somewhere, right there, "Not released for construction." Well, now, construction would have to have more details and this would be broken down into maybe a hundred pages and all be separated for different stuff.
Sure.
So for the purpose of an application, I don't see a problem with it, but that's why we're going to the board and, I mean, do, does anybody have objections to, or I'm subjection, concern?
Just, just the same thing. I would actually argue that, that you could put some relevant dimensions on this to be able to see, well, how far is, how far is that from the edge of the property line? How far is it from Ms. Bernstein's house or her fence? You know, you can't necessarily do that without just seeing some of the major, major dimensions on it.
So a question there would be, again, if we're gonna get to what's in the ordinance itself, does it state that that has to be done, though it might be helpful for some or not for others or whatever? Is that demanded by the ordinance?
Yeah, I don't know, I guess you really just can only read when it's saying.
It says it provides, I'll say, some form of dimensions. I'm adding that word.
What does it say again?
It has to provide dimensions.
Says like two sets of plans.
Showing the dimensions, and I'm gonna skip the part about things that already exist because that would be the trees, and the locations and dimensions of the proposed building or alterations.
Mr. Goulden, are we supposed to basically take a vote on each item?
You can do it however you want. I mean, I don't, you know, the, in your, during your deliberations, if you're looking at thirty or fifty-four thirty-five and you read what else is to be included in there, I think what you really would need to vote on is whether or not it was validly submitted under the ordinance on that day.
Okay.
Yeah, this is one of several points, I think, that we have to consider.
Okay.
To make that before we vote on it.
I, I guess I would wonder if we don't maybe take the point, though, and see if we.
Agree or disagree.
Agree or disagree to that.
Sure.
Point of it and move forward and kind of build in a stackable fashion.
Yeah, and, and so I think the next piece of that says, after the dimensions piece, says, "And applicable, any other applicable," read the next part of the fifty-four thirty-five.
The, the application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article.
So then this article, so the.
Article two.
Article two, and one, one that they've talked about a lot is, a couple down from fifty-four thirty-five is fifty-four thirty-seven. And that, that one is, that brings up the, the requirement for the, the written preliminary approval of proposed water and supply, water supply sewage facilities. Can we just talk about that, please?
Sure. Here's, here's part of where my brain goes with that. You know, I liked the piece that this is a process, the application is a process. There is the initial application form and the initial site plan, but the application is this evolving process until it gets approved and moves on to the next, the next steps. And so if I think of the application as not that snapshot in time, that it starts there, but it's, you know, I was a lit major, so I would write a paper, but my first draft was not anything like my last draft. It was this ongoing thing until I had to actually turn it in for my approval or not. So in a similar way, I would say, until it's gone to the planning board, I think is the next step, it's still in that forming application.
So I think you could say that an application is an application to start the process. And then you go through the process and then it gets to the planning board and they make a decision, determination whether they want to approve this or not. So it's not really going to be complete until the permit is issued from the township. So maybe they'll add things as it's going along.
I understand it a little bit differently. I, I see that there's, there's an application that you, that you would first start, at the, at the very beginning, you're gonna, you're gonna start this application process and that evolving process. The application is officially submitted at the time when it's considered complete, to the point that it is, at least has the minimum requirements of the ordinance that says that application can be, you know, considered, submitted as of, as of a date in this case. So when, when that should be, so for example, let's say that you submitted something that, you know, like was, you know, just some notes and things that said, I'm gonna, here's my, here's my idea, then, and then an ordinance changes. I mean, the, the fact that you have something that you just put out there, you know, partially complete, wouldn't necessarily hold you, to Mr. Norah's point, to be held to those standards. If you want to lock in the law at that time, then you need to put in a complete application, not just, you know, something. And by that, when we, you know, what is required at the time of the application, I think we have to just go by what the ordinance says that are requirements at the time of the application versus things that are required by the time the permit is issued. And that's where a lot of the evolution piece comes in. So I think some of the things where we talk about an evolving site plan, I understand that that is something that they obviously had to go and change because of different interpretations of what were the rules that the town was telling them, or, you know, should it be more than one building or one building, all of those kinds of things. So, so the, so it's going to change and it's going to evolve, but if we listen to what the ordinance says are requirements of the application, that's what I think we're reading is that the fifty-four thirty-five starts to describe that, that what has to go with the application. The fifty-four thirty-seven, and I wrote this one down because it's, it, it sticks out to me, is that the zoning administrator shall not issue an application for a zoning compliance permit, et cetera, for, for any use, and this is the one regarding the, the requirements for the water. So this is talking about the application, they, before they even begin the process of building something, especially something that's a hundred and ten, you know, a, a big development of multifamily homes, is there adequate water and sewage capability there? You need, and it says, before they issue an application for a zoning compliance permit for any, any use.
So let me stop one second because I think when you say that, before they issue the application, this is coming from the township issuing that. So I think that actually, my interpretation is that means them giving them an actual permit. They're calling it application permit, but I don't think that, I, I don't believe that that's the application. I think that means them giving the owner a, a permit.
Then, well, then it would say, "The zoning administrator shall not issue a permit for a zoning permit."
And I'll, I'll go mid, mid-range and say, it would be when, I'm hearing it as when she would take it to the planning board to, okay, here is our application for the permit.
Is it submitted? And so, if, so it doesn't, right, so at the time that it's going to be, you know, an application, then it needs to be accompanied with, it needs to be.
But that's the application for the zoning compliance permit.
An issue, right, to issue the application for the zoning compliance permit, which is what this is.
Right.
This is a zoning compliance.
This word application is getting us.
I know.
Different directions.
Well, even, okay, even if you, even if it, if we think of it as along with the whole thing, let, let me finish reading this part because this is where I think it's important. The, now let's just continue where I, where I left off with the, the zoning, or why don't you read it from there so that we're making sure that it had the exact wording of fifty-four thirty-seven?
Where applicable, the zoning administrator shall not issue an application for a zoning compliance permit for any use, building, or purpose proposed for location inside of the incorporated municipality without written preliminary approval of any proposed water supply and sewage disposal facilities as required from the county sanitarian, Woodfin Water and Sanitary District, and appropriate state agency. Issuements and use of a certificate of zoning compliance shall be subject to all terms and qualifications imposed by the regulatory agencies.
So, so the pieces of that that I think are important is that without written preliminary approval, so this isn't the approval, this is just written preliminary approval of these proposed water supply and sewage facilities as required from county sanitarian, Woodfin Water and sanitary, and sanitary district, and any appropriate state agency. So it may not even just be Woodfin Water, I don't know who else it would need to go to, but none, there, there isn't any preliminary approval from anyone. So then, then the question becomes, and they've argued this on the other side, is where applicable, right? And is this applicable? Does it apply to wells and septic? I don't think so because it doesn't say that here, right?
I don't think a well and septic apply to this project.
Right, and, and this doesn't say anything about that anyway, it's any water supply. And the, so one of the exhibits two that, that, so Shannon Tuck was looking into this on the, on this, on this area. So the, so on, in, in exhibit four, this was an email from Shannon Tuck to the water guy named Joe Woodfin, asking on July eighth about water pressure question. You know, "Thanks again for chatting with me this morning. This is just a follow-up and ask you to confirm which properties in our zoning study area highlighted in the diagonal hatched on the map have low pressure and where we may want to discourage higher density development until such as, such time as water infrastructure can be improved in a reasonable manner. Considerations for our zoning study will include road water and stormwater infrastructure, but will also consider other things such as character the existing area and development patterns along with minimizing impact in environmentally sensitive steep slope areas. We are, we are currently looking at a phase Y and phase two. These areas are marked on the map as are phase one only, so even if there is adequate water, we wouldn't necessarily remove the properties from our zoning study, but we are interested in knowing what the water service is like in these areas." So then when you look at the map that she drew, there's the whole big property that we know is the bigger hundred and sixty acres, whatever, and then there's the seventeen acre piece right here, right? So that's where she's asking, "Thanks for taking a look, apologies for my crude math, but you might just want to mark it up for as LP for low pressure and okay for parcels that are, can be easily served with adequate service and return to me if we appreciate it." One of these properties outlined, and Purple had a development application, but it just expired and we want to go ahead and get the, the rezoning initiated before any new applicants come in. So they're working to figure out how to rezone this thing because, because they just had this get canceled in their, at that point in time on July eighth is what they thought, and so they want to go and, and rezone this thing. So then on July eighth also, Adrian sends the rezoning request to rezone it all, which they rezone all the other parts of it, RD twenty-two or something, for the residential, and all of that would then have to abide by the steep slope ordinance, which we all know what, what that entails, right? You know, every inch of dirt that you're gonna uncover and how many square feet it is. And so, so that's the, and this, no answer was ever given to the, to that yet, and so there isn't preliminary approval for the water. In fact, we don't even know.
Well, there was testimony that typically they do not go to utilities until later on in the project planning process because of the cost factor and they don't know even how to design it and engineer it because they don't know what's being built.
Right.
So normally.
Not the plant, not the, sizes of pipes and locations.
But preliminary.
Just as their, just as their.
But how would you get a preliminary approval if you don't even know what you're building? I guess I'm gonna be devil's advocate.
Just that, just that you're, you're, you've got a proposal for a hundred and ten houses.
I think several people testified that the public utilities do service that area.
Right, the Woodfin Water services that, right.
So then they would have utilities accessible to them.
No, they, they, that's what this question is, is there enough?
So typically I've seen.
Is there enough water to support?
Site plan approvals with conditional site plan, most, anything I've seen, almost all site plan approvals I've seen are conditions upon utilities. And once they come before the planning board, the planning board makes a decision whether they like the project and want the planning and it meets the town's needs. And then once the developer gets that approval, then he goes to the electric utility, he goes to the water utility, he goes to sewer utility and says, "Now I'm gonna spend money and say, okay, this is my new design, can you support this?" And if they can't, then everything's null and void anyway because you don't meet the conditions. So I have, you don't get your permit until you get all that in. They, the township will not issue a permit for construction until they have all those conditions met, which are in that ordinance, says you shall have that stuff. But during, if we're looking at, I'm trying to keep this in perspective here, if we're looking at the application, this is the application we're looking at, this piece of paper here, right?
And it has the attachments that go with it.
Yes, so I'm trying to keep us on track here, so I'm sorry.
I'm, and I, I actually think that there's two pieces to the water approval, that there is the preliminary approval that is, that I'm referring to in fifty-four thirty-seven. There's, and that's not a permit, and that's not the appropriate permit that is, that's needed in the end. It's just the preliminary approval that is there adequate water, you know, kind of like you just assumed, it's city water, sure, there's water, you gotta ask, there's, there's gotta be, the question has to be raised.
Can I interrupt first?
Sure, yeah.
They wouldn't spend all that money though if they didn't think they could get utilities.
No, no, it's, it's just a matter of him answering the, answering the question, right?
But Shannon sent this to the water company or embassy or whatever.
Not the developer.
Right.
No, no, and I'm wondering why the developer couldn't have done this to get a preliminary, is it okay in this area, is there enough water pressure?
Maybe they did and we, it's not in our record, I, I don't know.
You know, I have to believe they did their due diligence to verify that they have water and sewer and stuff where they wouldn't.
I don't see it in the record.
I agree, I don't see it in the record, yes, I agree.
I don't see it in the record either.
So I, I think that that was one of the requirements of the application coming in along with what we just talked about, a site plan that includes dimensions and whether those are good enough for dimensions, that's the debatable piece. It also needs preliminary water approval and sewer approval to come with, with the application. So it's, it's a pre-step.
Yeah.
Part of the testimony that we heard was that that really, that ordinance and that language in the ordinance and why it's changing has to do with, we're wondering if we're drilling a well, if it perks for sewage for a.
But you're, you're bringing up something that, that doesn't appear in the, in the ordinances, well and septic and.
It, that is not the wording, but it was the understanding when it was written of.
That's what we were told, that's what we were told by.
That was a testimony of a, of a witness, professional ability, I believe.
Okay.
Was that that Department of Health part of it was to do with well and septic, not city water and not city sewage.
And, and I hear your point that it, that it was maybe at the time it was written, it might have meant more things than, than, than it might, you know, today, even still, when you're, when you're at the top of, of this mountain, you're above twenty-two hundred feet, you know, and you're in the steep slope areas, which this is, then the, the way to get water up there. then the, the way to get water up there is from the town of Woodfin's giant water tower that's over there. And that thing that sits there, you know, is, is got X amount of gallons in it and it sits at a, at a, at a height and elevation that has, is going to give some things downhill from it, good water pressure, things that are uphill from it have to get pumped. So, there, so there's a certain amount of capacity that the Woodfin Town water supports. And it might support a hundred and ten houses, I don't know. But, but I, I, they're, they've got to ask. And they, and they need at least preliminary approval before the board even will accept the application. And, and you could take it and say, no, it needs it, but I don't think they ever said, no, it needs it. And I think that's part of the problem, that it should have required it and, and, and it didn't. So, that's.
Well, the initial notification was for a hundred and ten units either though.
It was for, I think.
Well, let me, again, I'm going to try and read this back in, because in the first part, it's asking a valid submission.
May seventeenth.
On May seventeenth. So, the way I'm looking at it is, this is a submission and Ms. Tuck and, well, Ms. Tuck wasn't there, Ms. Eisenhower at the time. And then later on, Ms. Tuck reviewed it and agreed, and I know that's the question we're debating right now, is that was this application, this RD zero zero three complete? Am I correct in reading when I'm looking at number one?
Yeah, and I think that's what we're here to decide.
Yes, but I understand that, but I mean, I don't see how water has anything to do with this application, the application form.
And, and I would, I would say the application form is addressed by fifty-four thirty-five. Fifty-four thirty-seven addresses a different part of the process.
That's the end process.
That's not the application.
Fifty-four thirty-five though says is, is, is about the, the, the application, right? And it says it shall include the two sets of plans, right? Is that fifty-four thirty-five? And anything else as required to enforce this article. So, if there's something else in Article Two that's applicable, then it's, then it's required.
But that's applicable to, to receive a permit to start?
No, to, to, to get an application and consider it a valid application.
So, this is where I think we're, we're having a problem with the word application.
I feel like the application's complete.
I, I do too. My opinion, the application's complete, because the way it's worded in that ordinance, it's the, the town official is going to give the application of permit to the person. But that's what happens at the very end. This is the application to start the process, as well, I'm going to try to make it simple terms.
It needs to be a complete application.
And I believe according to this, it is complete. If we took the checklist, it is complete.
So, I mean, I guess. Well, if you take the ordinance, it's not, it doesn't have the.
But I think like.
It has, it has two sets of plans with some dimensions.
Yes.
And it has no preliminary water approval.
But that's not needed, I don't believe from the ordinance, that's not needed until later.
I think it is, but then, so, so then the, that application, um, if it, okay, so let's, let's simplify that application a whole bunch and just say, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to build, okay, and there, there's my application, I give it to you. And that, and then now, now the ordinance changes next week. And then now, the, this thing is no longer that I wrote, wrote here, isn't, doesn't meet the new law, but it meets the old law. So, now, when we go to say, okay, which law should this one, this, this scribbled piece of paper have to abide by? The old law, because I scribbled it down and handed it to you right before the law changed? You know, it has to be a valid application.
I, well, I believe they, I think they submitted a valid application and the choose rule, whatever that is. The reason I understand is, is to protect people, because if a town wants to change ordinance to stop a project, it protects them from that happening.
I, I completely agree. So, the permit of choice is there for that purpose, to be able to say, you don't have, you're not trying to hit a moving target.
Right.
I agree, I agree with that. And so, that is why the, the, the life of that application process has some, some back and forth as they're trying to understand what the requirements are. And one of those requirements, though, upfront with the application, is a couple of these things that it should come with. And it never did come with the water approval, to this day. So, if they go get it.
But that hasn't gone to the planning board yet, I don't think we're gotten to that point yet. In the process, it stopped because they filed an appeal. So, the whole process that is stopped. So, realistically, the Mr. Norris group, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't mean that, Mr. and Ms. Bernstein and.
The appellants.
The appellants, they stopped this process by filing appeal.
Right, because they see that the application wasn't complete.
Correct.
Right.
And based upon the evidence, there was no appeal on this application within thirty days. There was no appeal on this application at all.
Right, the appeal is to the September thirtieth letter, which says that this application was indeed complete. On, and, and that it should be, um, and that it should follow the rules in place at the time on May seventeenth. So, that's what they're appealing, is saying, you know, sure, you can submit that application and you can go add, go get the water preliminary approval, but when you submit that now, that, you can't go get the old date anymore. Because, just because you jammed it in quickly and it, you know, doesn't mean now that you go and add the things that were required. Now, it doesn't require of, you know, pipe dimensions, locations, it's not a plan for soup, for water. It's not a, um, it's not a complete, you know, these aren't building drawings that you're going to actually be able to build by. It's, it's all still application level stuff. But the application level stuff, some of those things are just required because they're, they're looking at environmental safety type things, they're looking at, you know.
So, can I jump in? I think one of our big sticking points here, and I think we could be in this discussion for several more four-hour sessions. So, I think where, a place we're stuck right now are a couple of different thoughts. One, that the application starts and is a process. And the other is that an application and, and gets completed over that process before it goes to the planning board. And the other, if I'm understanding, is that from the first submission or from the, for us to consider it submitted, then it has to have every component.
No, X, X number of things.
So, it's every, every component necessary to be, uh, ready for the planning board.
A little, so I'm saying it a little bit differently, so I think it's a hybrid of those two things. So, if, if you, if you take the initial snapshot at a point in time and say that that's the application date and that's the, that's when it was in, then that's one extreme. If you say it's, it's going to, you know, there's the date, we'll, we'll still, you know, uh, keep that date and then we're going to, it's going to evolve until it's ready to go before the board. Which date then, you know, do you count? The, what I'm saying is that there are some things that are just, that are required to come along with the application. And that's, and once you have those, that that's the, that's the full, the official submitted date, which, and I don't even know that case, but that's the ASH case reference, where they, um, they, that was one of the last things they had, he had on the board that said, the, the application is not considered submitted until it is complete. Now, complete doesn't mean.
But that's a different process.
Board-ready approval, you know, it's not ready to go to the board and have, and have all of its things and it's definitely not ready for permitting. But prior to that, the application is complete when it contains the things that it should have with it.
But the case is not part of our.
No. Can I just, can I just say something? When an applicant goes before the town and fills out that application and hands it over to the clerk or whoever they, whoever accepts it, as, as the developer or as the builder, I'm assuming, or I would assume, that I have handed in my, an application. If there are other things that need to be required with it or whatever, that, then I should have been told that, I should have been told, nope, I will not accept that application unless you have this, this, and this. However, it was accepted, right? And so, therefore, the developer figures, okay, I am, you know, they have, my, my application's on file now. So, that's kind of where we're at, I think. It's not about what's included with it, it's about the process of applying for something. When you apply, when you apply to college, for heaven's sakes, you send in your application, they got it. You know, that's the way it is here. The township has my application. And so, if other things are required, then as far as I can see, the township needs to say, okay, I need to have this, this, and this before I accept your application. However, it was accepted.
They took the fee.
They took the fee?
So, that, so.
So, the application was accepted, whether it's complete or not, it was accepted. And so, as the per, as the developer, I'm thinking, okay, I've got my application in.
Does this have to be a majority vote?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just a majority vote and we could spend four hours on it. I don't, I don't want to disrupt any of your deliberations at all. Reasonable minds disagree is what, what I'll tell you. And that's appropriate, but we do have to get through all of the matters as you deem them appropriate. And, and I would like to stay here tonight until we do that, even if it's past nine o'clock.
So, then, let's make this decision then, let's, we'll call like a mini-vote, we're going to call a mini-vote. Let's take a mini-vote on this first number one item. So, I guess I'm going to ask the question and the vote is going to be is, do you feel that this was a valid submission? Is that the simplest way to word it that way? Okay, so was the application a valid submission, application complete?
I have another question.
Okay, cool.
In, in that list of things, the, the, the appeal has several different things that they say should be required with the application. And one of those was the, um, the, the drawings with, a site plan with dimensions. One of them is preliminary, um, water approval, not permit. Another one is the, the landscape plan by a licensed architect and the other one is a building design. Right, so what I want you guys to understand that I'm saying about that application is that the application is not complete if it doesn't have, uh, the, the required pieces to it, okay? Those pieces that are required to it, now that's where I think the subjectivity comes in. Some of these things, like, uh, a, a landscape plan, I mean, at the time of application starts to seem like not, that, that is not what the, the, the ordinance is specifically asking for. The, the, the Mountain Village ordinance has, has its description of those things that, uh, that I was just listing. So, um, and to what degree those, um, those are required, I think that that is where there's the difference between what does the ordinance say is a shall versus what does the ordinance say is a should. Okay, and, and that's where I'm separating the difference between an application can be accepted and considered to lock in that date sort of, if it's a valid application. Because that is so important to say, you're going to get to be measured by all of the laws as of that point in time, okay? And so, it's got to be valid at least to the point of including the shall information. And then, if we look at, you know, the, um, the additional information that's should type information, then we can look at, um, you know, the, did it have, um, did it need to have what level of a, a landscape plan or a building design, right? And those, those are the kind of things that with their application, maybe they didn't know that they had to have, you know, these kind of things. Because if they were to look at the ordinance, at the ordinance outside of getting, you know, any conversations with, with Woodfin, you wouldn't, you would, that's where all the interpretation of an empty checklist that doesn't even exist comes in. But what they do know are the couple shells in the, in the ordinance, which are, are the two, the drawing with dimensions and the preliminary water plan. So, that's where I'm drawing the line in my mind between an application having the, the required components and an application, you know, that it's going to then, you know, then the plans are going to evolve and then it's going to be about, you know, building design and whether it's multifamily or group development and all these kind of things, right?
You know, it just occurred to me, um, I think we're misreading fifty-four thirty-seven. Where applicable, the zoning administrator shall not issue an application for a zoning compliance permit for any blah, 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 blah. So, I'm going to say Shannon Tuck's not going to issue the, the application to the develop, to the developer, if that's applicable, but it's not the process. It's not, it's not applicable.
Well, I think, I see, that's why I read that as application, that they, they wouldn't, uh, it's almost like they, maybe at the time that they had it, they didn't have this form available online, right? Whatever that was written, so they're, you know, I'm not going to even kind of give you this application or take it from you, either way, I'm, the wording is weird how it says issue. But there, I think they're specifically referring to the application and whether that application is going to be accepted and considered submitted.
But it says.
If.
If applicable, and it's no longer applicable because you can just.
The information that goes.
Fifty-four thirty-seven starts, if applicable.
And I think that this one, that is talking about is, you know, are these health, you know, are, is, is getting water. If, if they're not, if it's not something that is, you know, maybe they're building a park or something and it's not going to have water requirements, so it's not applicable. So, if it, but if it is, if it's, if it's going to have a hundred and ten houses that have water and toilets, then you got to go get your. Let's, we can, we can. But anyway, so that, so that's a, that's a one piece. So, I think that the other pieces, um, we should just validate that we have.
Well, I'm going to take it one step at a time, one section. So, right now, we're going to talk just number one, issue one, number one. So, the question I'm going to ask and we're going to go through and I'm going to poll everybody is, do you feel this applica, this is a valid submission for the application on May seventeen, twenty twenty-one? Does that understand, did I say it clear, clear?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Hanson, do you believe that this was a valid submission on May seventeen, twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Ms. Gosnell, do you believe, yes? Uh, Ms. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Durham?
No.
And me as the chair, I'm going to say, yes, I believe it was. So, well, let's do this, we'll do it section by section and then we'll come back and we'll get Mr. Golden's approval how we're going to finalize this. Because, and unless there's a problem, I'm going to say we should go through and finish this tonight.
Yes.
Does everybody get this, okay?
We do need to have, not simply a vote, but some deliberation on the second.
Yes, yeah, oh, yes, we're going to, so now we're going, because I haven't even read this yet. Applicability of NCGS.
Well, there's one other just small little issue with that threshold, because it was number, and I apologize, but it was. And again, these are your, you all do it the way that you want to. But, but with the vote, you, you might consider going to be, and that would be if, if affirmed, which means you would affirm the decision that it was a valid.
Oh, okay.
Did any of the subsequent revisions of HS Robin Hood amount to a new application? That was, I think, number four in, in CRLUs. But, but again, these are just the way that I kind of see it in my little brain. You all have the power of five and so you address it any way you want to.
Okay, so we'll call that one one A, one B. So, one B, the question is, um, did any subsequent revisions of HS Robin Hood amount to a new application? And I'm going to just start off with my opinion, based upon the evidence we have heard, they never had a, never asked for a second application fee. They, all the drawings refer back to the original drawing, it's the original. They, all the drawings refer back to the original drawing as the original application.
On each.
And there have all been revisions. I mean, just as simple, I'm going to leave it at those two simple things that I do not believe.
And several people testified that numerous revisions.
Do not.
Are very typical, yeah.
And they didn't turn in a new application form.
No, no, never did.
So do we have further discussion upon that or are we good to, for a vote for that one? Okay, so we'll go to the same thing. This question is, uh, upon the valid submission, did any subsequent revisions of the HS Robin Hood amount to a new application? So Mr. Hanson.
I want to make sure I'm.
Looking at one B.
Meaning what I'm saying. So no, none of them amounted to new applications.
Okay, Ms. Gosnell? Ms. Hoffman?
No.
Mr. Duroni?
No.
And me as chair, no for me also. Okay, Mr. Golden on that down?
Yes.
Now we're going to go to issue one, item two. The decision that the ordinance in effect on May 17th applies to the application and site plan submitted on such date should be affirmed or reversed in whole or part, modified considering the vote. A, was the application placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months? So let's do it piecemeal again. So this is issue one, two A, and we're going to have two B. Um, I will start off also, um, based upon what I have heard with the evidence, I am going to say that I do not believe that it was placed on hold. I think there was some testimony, and again, we're going to use the, the word hold was bounced around like the word application. I think it was confused sometimes from some of those evidence we've heard. But clearly, my understanding is that the applicant did not want it to go on a planning board meeting with only two weeks' notice. But I don't believe that that meant he wants the whole project to be put on hold. And clearly, the evidence showed that the township and the applicant were all doing other work behind the scenes during that period of time. So do we want to have more discussion on that?
And in that letter.
I agree with that.
Actually said, we've got more details we're working on.
Yes.
We're doing more.
I think Chris Day even said he may have misused his words when he sent a couple of those emails. But that's not what was meant.
Do we need more discussion on that?
All right, so the vote, the question at hand right now is for two A is, was the application placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months? Mr. Hanson?
No.
No, Ms. Gosnell, no. Ms. Hoffman?
No.
Mr. Duroni?
No.
And me as chair, no. That takes us down to two B. Did the applicant fail to respond to comments or provide additional information reasonably requested by local government for a period of six consecutive months? And I will speak to that too again. I think we just talked about it. I believe there was between Mr. Day and, um, Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck and the other people on the board. They were corres, corresponding back and forth throughout this process. And I believe there were even some stuff that was in here and dates that were maybe five months, but they did not go to six months.
That's what I remember.
Board have other communication?
Yeah, I was seeing, well, so I think that if we look at the, the information that they were asking for, they had communication during that time, but I don't think that they supplied information until we're all the way into August 22, when they finally hired a landscape architect.
That was one item, but the, the question says, did the applicant, and I guess this kind of has to be, in my opinion, it has to be all or none in a way. Did the applicant fail to respond to comments or provide additional information as reasonably requested? Now, I know there was one thing, we talked about the, the landscape, the timing of that. But when Ms. Tuck and Ms. Eisenhower asked more questions, I believe from one of the evidence I saw that they were responding back in, in a timely fashion.
And, and furthermore, uh, Ms. Eisenhower said that she felt like they had responded fully to what she'd asked for, and that was in October with the October submission. That was part of the testimony we saw again tonight.
It is that, what they felt, and that's one of the things I, I disagree with. I think that they were, they listed a thing.
Who was, sorry, who was they?
Oh, Adrian listed six questions or something that she said, you know, answer these. And, and she even, on one of them, put the whole paragraph in there about this has to be with a licensed architect, et cetera, that, and, and that, and that's an example of something that I don't think is required at the time of application. But that's, you know, they're, that, the, it still wasn't supplied until they, until they had the licensed architect on it the next year, you know, and the next, I think they got him in July or August 22. So just, you know, that, that's, that's dragging the whole thing on to, I'd have to look at her list of the other things that were there. I just know that that one for sure was one that they didn't do.
Sure. How I read that sentence is, did they essentially neither respond or did, so, and they responded. They kept responding and responding and giving more information, responded back and forth.
And unfortunately, I think someone mentioned earlier, do we have any information, evidence on the phone calls? No, we don't. So it could have been said, oh, okay, that is good, and again, I'm assuming again, but we don't need that right now.
Right.
Okay, I mean, they were, there was communication. If I read this question.
And if, Mr. Chairman, if, and, and I don't want to, again, interrupt your deliberations. What I will do is I'm going to read to you directly from what the permit choice statute says. I don't want my notes to give you any indication that I, I was trying to misinterpret the permit statutes or, or anything like that. And so what the, the permit choice says in 140, North Carolina General Statute 143, 755, in paren B1, if a permit application is placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months or more, comma, or the applicant fails to respond to comments or provide additional information reasonably requested by the local or state government for a period of six months or more, comma, the application review is discontinued and the development regulations in effect at the time permit processing is resumed, apply to the application. So I tried to write it like the statute says, but I'm, you're welcome to look at the statute, you're, to, to address it. And so if I was, if I confused you all, I apologize.
No, it's okay. I, I believe that they did make a effort to communicate back and forth. I don't, I do not believe that they.
I don't, and I don't disagree. There, clearly is communication. They, they, did they fail to respond to comments? No. Or provide additional information reasonably requested for a period of six consecutive months? Yes, that, so that's what they didn't do. It's, so it's got to be both. They, they, sure, they can be talking, but they, they have a still time limit that says you got, you still have to give us this stuff.
Item read it as having to be both.
Well, I think that they did. They did supply a lot of information. They, I mean, the only thing that I remember right now that was not supplied, maybe at, what the people, the, the, the team that are appealing this said that they did not supply the landscaping architect on time. Um, but that's one item, but they did have evidence that everything else was provided.
Yeah, I'd have to look at her original email. I forget what else was on it.
But I don't think, I think kind of what Mr. Hanson was saying is, as far as not all, I mean, if they're supplying information, does it have to be 100% of all the information? I mean, I mean, that's probably not practical in the construction world. You're getting it as you're getting the information, you're supplying it back to the township.
And she was letting them know that they need this in order for it to move on to the planning board.
They needed, my understanding is they needed to have it before they were issued the permit. And that could have been, actually be after the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure what else was on her best.
Yeah. I don't think that they failed to respond, and I do believe they provided additional information.
Yes, I do. So we'll see.
Within six months.
Hold on, before we, I just want to make sure.
For my own sanity.
I see what the other things she was looking for were. Um, I'm going to see in, in the original submittal, I think she asked those clarifying questions like right up toward the beginning, so it's probably one of those RD, it's like.
Uh, 008 and 009.
Yeah. So it says landscaping and or buffering shall be provided as part of an approved master plan. So when all of it's been approved, it has to be.
Correct.
In place at that time.
Prior to issuance of a, of any permit. And, or actually, I would say prior to issuance of.
Must be approved as part of the master.
How they worded the zoning application, I think.
Um, she asked for clarification on the buildings, which is written on the plan.
Yeah, they clearly came back and, and described the.
Even on the initial one, it's, it has cottages listed, it has, um, triplex buildings listed, duplex buildings listed, parking listed.
So would you like more discussion on this?
No.
All right, so let's pull this one, so this is item two. This is issue one, item two, B. And the question was, did the applicant fail to, now, this is kind of like a backwards question. So did the applicant fail to respond to the comment, comments? Or did he, or provide additional information reasonably requested by the local governments for a period of six consecutive months? Mr. Hanson?
No.
Ms. Gosnell?
No.
Ms. Hoffman?
No.
Mr. Duroni?
No.
And myself as chair, no. So that covers issue one. And Mr. Golden, do we need to do something in general for each issue? Or do you want to do that at the very end?
I think you could do it at the very end with a motion to either affirm, reverse, or modify and hold or part the decision.
Based upon our.
Based upon, uh, the, the facts and conclusions of law that you heretofore made.
Okay, so issue two is determination. With regard to the administrative appeal from September 30th, 2022, letter of Shannon Tuck manager, town manager, interim planning director concerning the Robin Hood development. Application within the town limits of Woodfin, North Carolina Board, based on its interpretation, the zoning ordinance may, oh, affirm or whatever, this is saying the whole thing all over again, I apologize. The question is, multifamily residential dwelling unit. Number one, the decision that consolidate of all these residential units into a single building would be a multifamily dwelling and would not constitute a group development should be affirmed or reversed in whole or part or modified due to. So I guess this question is now is, the township decided it was a multifamily residential dwelling unit and not a group development. So we want to have discussion on that. Again, I'll say, my opinion based upon the definitions we have seen, the evidence we have seen, yes, the original one had multi dwellings, that one could have fallen under that. The law, I believe, or the ordinance wasn't correct at that time. But based upon the updated drawing with one building, and there's clearly a number one on the drawing, um, I didn't see any evidence from anywhere that said it was not one building that I can remember. And if anybody else did, please say that.
No, but we didn't actually ask for a drawing of the building.
Well, it's there. This is, this is the evidence we have.
Oh, no, that's all we have.
Right. And it shows one building.
It shows a building with two triangles, three separate things with two triangles connecting it.
Said those are going to be the corner, apartment, corner condos that were going to be bigger.
Yes.
He was very clear about.
Oh, okay.
That's all one.
And the evidence, and the architect said it was an articulated building. That was his word, I believe.
Okay, then that's fine.
Was one main and then two, we'll call two wings. So based upon the evidence and based upon the drawings that I see, I see one building. First rendering, no doubt, there's a difference. But that has been revised to be one building. So at that, that point, um, question is, do we feel it's a multifamily dwelling unit? And do we want to have discussion on that or are we good to go for a vote on that?
The only thing that gets me a little bit on, on that was one, one big, one big thing that there's, there's, there's one place in the, uh, the definition that we've read that we're saying, well, it is that, but it's not an apartment, they say court. And that's the one thing that was getting me.
The hotel.
No, no, apartment court.
That's from the planner's dictionary that you're.
I forget where that, yeah, that was.
The picture.
Right, it's, it's what does that thing really constitute? And that's why this one just has me confused. The, because if you.
So the apartment court was three different buildings.
Right.
So it was three different apartment buildings that made up a court of buildings. But it's also, the planner's dictionary is not in our.
Evidence?
No.
Evidence, and we do have other things that are in our evidence.
Right, right, yeah.
There's, what is a dwelling, what is a, right.
So I mean, let's read this again. So the decision that consolidate all the residential units into a single building would be a multifamily dwelling and would not constitute a group development should be affirmed or reversed. So I mean, that's kind of short, sweet and simple for looking at. Question is, do we feel it's a multifamily dwelling or is it group development? So.
I see it as a multifamily building.
Based upon, if it's one building, it cannot be a group development. So that was based upon the evidence. It would have to be multifamily dwelling. So it, so the first question is, do we agree that it's just one building? If we agree that it's just one building, then I don't think there's any negotiation because.
Unless the short term.
The law says.
Change it from being.
Short term rentals too, because there was, there was testimony with that. And each condo will be owned by separate owners. And the owner will not live there.
May not.
May not live there.
May not live there.
It would be after them.
Trying to, to, to not link it to a hotel, because a hotel is one owner for the entire building.
That's right.
That's why I'm looking at it. Hotels, one owner for entire building and they rent out rooms. This is going to be 110, in theory, could be different owners. And if you decide that you want to rent it out, that's your choice. So I mean.
If allowed.
If allowed, that's, but I don't see that even coming into this question right now. I mean, this is just talking about, is it a single building, a multifamily or group development?
And again, I'm not trying to confuse you with the way that I, I need you all to recall the evidence and present it, look at what the decision was, was made.
Several people testified that it was, it was one building.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's a question really about whether it's one building or not. I don't think that the fact that it's one building means it's a multifamily. I think then we have to go on our understanding of what is a multifamily dwelling.
But under the group definition, if we would look at the group definition, the group definition said two or more buildings on one property.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So it's not a group.
It's not a group.
Right. So the question is, is a multifamily or it's a group?
It's a multifamily.
It's multifamily.
But the answer, remember, we could have an entirely different answer, that it's neither one. We're, we don't have to.
Oh, okay.
Have be pigeonholed into that. So we've got, I think it, due diligence here for us is definitely, we need to also affirm, you know, not just deny that it's a group development, but also affirm that it's a multifamily.
Okay.
Okay.
And I would, I would say that it is, because it is multiple 110 units.
In one unit.
Potentially owned by 110 different folks. It's not owned by one hotel corporation. And it's for the purpose of sleeping, dwelling, for the purpose of like sleeping and living.
With a kitchen.
Well, it didn't have to have a kitchen, that.
Yeah.
Another definition talked about that, but, you know, so I think it meets that dwelling piece and it seems to meet that multifamily as well. Is that?
I agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
More discussions or ready for vote?
No.
Okay, so based upon this, the question is going to be, decision that consolidate all the residential thing would be a multifamily development, not consolidate group development should be affirmed. Okay, so do you affirm, I'm going to word it this way. Do you affirm that the decision to consolidate all the residential buildings into a single building would be a multifamily dwelling and not be a group development? Yes. Mr. Hanson, yes? Ms. Gosnell?
Yes.
Ms. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Duroni?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so now that we did all the mini stuff, would someone like to make a motion? Got to word this correctly.
And I just want to, to make sure, um, that the appeal that's filed under 150, RD 151, with the errors number one through. with the errors number one through five, I want to make sure that you all feel that through the information that I presented to you, all of those issues were addressed. And it starts on RD 155 with error number one.
So error number one was a single building, multi determination.
I just want to make sure that you all feel that you've addressed all of those issues with what you have voted on so far, and then you can move into the motion.
And by being a multifamily, it's a permitted use, so it goes to ministerial review.
Correct. Which still goes before the planning board.
Yeah.
So one, two, or three.
Number two is on one, RD 157, along with error number three.
Yeah, that was the ministerial review, and so number three is ordinance.
And ordinance versus determination. Next error is, that they have to base the rules.
I think.
I think we agreed that.
Wait, wait, wait.
Error, E-R-R-O-R. Sorry.
Error number, error number two.
I think number three is covered by what we've already determined.
Okay.
By vote.
Long as, I guess what Mr. Golden's saying, have we discussed all these and we're aware of all these?
Yes.
That we've covered it. One, two, and three, yes.
RD 161 is error number four and five.
Towns are declaring that applications were amendments. I think that was taken care of in the very beginning. We said it was one.
There was one application.
One application.
Correct.
And five, properly submitted, we said we did, would by vote, said it was properly submitted.
Four to one.
Yes. So based upon, we covered the five different errors, and based upon our votes that we took our many votes ahead of time, would someone like to make a motion that we affirm the township's decision?
Contain.
On that, Ms. Tuck with that letter dated, whatever.
September 30th, 2022.
That'd be good. Does someone like, someone like to make that motion?
I'll give it a college try.
Okay.
I'd like to, I move that we affirm the decision made by Shannon Tuck in her letter.
I have one quick question first. Can we, can, can we put a condition on that here, or should a condition be put at?
Let him finish his motion, and then it can be up for discussion before there's a vote, as opposed to.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
I propose that we, I move that we affirm the decision made by Shannon Tuck in her letter of September 30th, 2022, from the town of Woodfin to Beau Carpenter, Alan Stoll, and Kilburn, stating that this was, that the revised site plan consolidated all of the residential units and amenity areas into a single building. And so it is classified as a multifamily building and is permitted use. And so we'll go through ministerial review. And that this application can move forward in the process.
And go before the planning board for review?
Sure.
Mr. Golden, does that cover our, but?
Well, I would, well, I was going to cover it with this. And my suggestion would be at the end of that sentence, say, with the condition that the, the request by the town manager, Shannon Tuck, to get the ruling on the water capability of that site be answered prior to going in front of the board. I don't know that we should do that.
The, your, when hearing an appeal, the board may reverse or affirm wholly or partly or modify the decision appealed from and shall make any order requirement, decision, or determination that ought to be made.
I think Shannon was looking for that answer before, to begin with. That's one thing. The, I think that the application actually has that as a shell, that it should be part of, the, part of the application. And if we're not going to consider the application incomplete, I think before it's, it's considered a valid application to go in front of the board, that it's, that it needs that.
Let me answer this question before we go into further discussion. You made, Mr. Hanson made a motion. Did we get a second?
Not me. I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. I just want to make sure we have our proper channels done. So now you're open to discussion.
Right. And I'm just saying, amend that motion to be the same thing we, we approved.
For them to provide proper.
Yeah, that we.
Water, sewer allocation.
Right, right, that's all. Just to validate it.
All right. So we understand what you would like to do. I think proper procedure is to vote on the motion that's been made.
No.
Or do you wish to?
He's offering this as an amendment, and you have to vote on the amendment.
Condition.
And then vote on the entire.
So I'm just saying to amend the motion, that we, that we add that as a.
Right, so he's made a motion to, to amend your motion. I think it needs a second and then a vote. It doesn't have a.
So if you want to put that amendment to his motion, I said, my concern would be that there should also be the.
We, we need a second before we can discuss.
Okay.
A second to his amendment?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to amend that motion to also include the preliminary approval of the water through the town of Woodfin or whoever the appropriate.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, so now I have a question or a motion that if we're going to do that, I think it should be stated before a permit is issued, not before the planning board. Because that's not our, because we don't, we're not experts in that.
Well, so now, I mean, now you're, we're, we're in the, we had a motion and a second, and we had a motion to amend that, and now.
So that's a wonder.
Well, I'm having discussion on his.
I mean, oh, yeah, that's right. Yes, okay, so go ahead. You guys discuss. You were looking at me like you wanted me to answer.
No, no, I'm asking Chris, I mean, I don't have a problem with you filling in, but I think it should be put that is before the township issue, issues its final permit.
And the difference, the difference there is that when it gets into the board's hands, the, the board, let's say that it's us, it's the other board, but, you know, the planning board, let's say it's us. And now it comes to us, but we're not experts in all of the water stuff. And, and rather than us even questioning it, if we just see that the town of Woodfin has nodded their head, like I think that the ordinance is saying, it's just a preliminary approval, saying that there's adequate water, and that's all. And it should be part of what's handed to me in the, in the town report, you know, the staff report.
If they find out next week that they can't get water, then this whole, this doesn't even happen.
Someone else wants to go on. Are we allowed to do that?
Are you allowed to do what? And you, your authority is by statute, and it can reverse or affirm wholly or partly or modify the decision appealed from, right? So we're looking at the decision. And make any order requirement, decision, or determination that ought to be made.
All right, so I don't have, me personally, I don't have a problem with your, your amendment, but maybe we should word it preliminary?
Just like the thing says, that's all I want.
Because I don't remember I heard that word. Because I don't want to.
They don't have to go get, they don't have to go get a licensed plumber to go and measure pipes and, yeah.
So you just want to know that there is water and sewer.
That's all it is. It's just approval, preliminary approval from the local.
Utilities.
There.
Mr. Hanson, would that be okay with you?
If they're public utilities or services.
And we can state it just like it is in there. That's all I would want to do, is state it just like the ordinance is.
So it would be cleaner, I suppose.
We could say in accordance with ordinance 5437.
I don't know. We've got, we've got the, we've got the motion seconded and the amendment, and after discussion, it looks like the amendment was, was going to be changed. So Mr. D'Erone, I suppose, could withdraw his amendment and restate it, because I, I'm not sure, I, I don't, I don't know what it really says now.
I meant to state it this way, so I could just restate it.
You want to start it about line three of 5437?
Right. And the, the, before this, the thing that I'm amending it to, do I need to restate that, that we uphold the, the decision determined by?
So let, let's vote on his amendment, and, and I think if he, if, if it's turned down or denied, if his amendment is turned down or denied, he could make another motion to modify it again.
I think I'm allowed as the original mover to say, I will accept that into.
You can.
The original motion.
So can, let's say, can I, can we make all of the motions null and void? Are we allowed to do that and start over again?
Just to restate.
Well, I mean, just, just to have Mr. Hanson restate his motion, which would kind incorporate both into one, make it simple and clean.
Sure. If you want to withdraw your motion, you want to withdraw your amendment, and you can restate your motion.
Would that work?
Yeah.
She's like entirely restate.
In a different way.
I don't think you have to get all the details, but I think we got the gist of what it is. We're going to, we're going to affirm the decision made by Ms. Tuck in her letter dated that date.
I would like to move, I move that we affirm Shannon Tuck's letter from September 30th, 2022, in its entirety. And with the added component that the landowners will get preliminary approval as indicated, pick it up from there for me, please.
For any proposals.
Water, here. How about public utilities? I'll leave it at that.
It's, it's. To be an new ordinance. From Woodfin Water and Sanitary District and appropriate state agency as applicable prior to this application moving to the planning board.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second.
Since you, that, does that meet your needs?
It does, it does.
Okay. We're good. Take a roll. And so Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Ms. Gosnell?
Yes.
Ms. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. D'Erone?
Yes.
And Chairman Michael Bennett? Yes. So then I would say that the appeal is denied. The letter is affirmed, is the, I'm stating.
No, you're fine.
Well, we generalized. Ms. Tuck's letter is affirmed with.
Decision her, her.
Her decision was affirmed with the contingency that were stated with the public utilities.
Condition that you get preliminary approval as stated by Mr. Hanson in his motion. All other motions that were made and seconded have died because no vote was taken, no action was taken on them.
Now, do we need something beyond that, or that's our final decision?
That's your final decision.
We need a gathering.
You need to have a motion to adjourn or if any of the.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, just a couple of really brief housekeeping items that I know everybody's ready to go on. While we're still on the record, we need to clarify one matter as to the ordinances that are part of the record and that have been presented to the board. There was a clarification that Mr. Noras just before the hearing began, if everybody can remember that far back. And that is that the, what I'm looking for is agreement from council that what's in the record are the ordinances that are before you now. And yes, Mr. Hanson, if you don't mind me to read those into the record as they're referred to on the cover, please.
Oh, so we're going to put in the matter record the town of Woodfin code of ordinances as of October 23rd, 2018.
And, and that's also been presented.
Okay. Town of Woodfin code of ordinances as of August 16th, 2022.
Council, objection to having those included as part of the record. And no objection from the town. Then one other matter, Mr. Chairman, before we dismiss is, you now have settled the record as, as of tonight, at any rate, in case of an appeal, that could still be discussed between the parties. What is not part of the record but is public record is the materials you've used in your deliberations. And so in the event that the town is, receives a request for any of those as public records, I'm going to ask you to leave all of them in charge of the town in that event. I know you all wanted to take them home and read over again tonight, everything you spent the last month and a half doing. Please, please just leave those in charge of.
Okay, how about all the evidence that was admitted? That's mine. I mean, I don't want it, but I, I mean.
Just leave it. Just leave it all.
Okay, and how about our notes?
Leave it all.
Okay.
All right.
Is that okay, Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, so, so public record is defined in 132.
Dash one.
Dash one, yeah. And it talks about documents, recordings, notes, video transcripts, emails that are made or delivered pursuant to law. And if the town's making the.
Whatever's up there that's truly personal, if it's a birthday card, if it's something that has nothing to do with this, if you make any notes about this hearing, you want to take it with you by all means.
Okay, otherwise.
Excuse me, if you're late for the hearing in any way, please.
Okay, no way can be my writing anyway.
I'm like the planner's dictionary.
I think, I think you could probably take the evidence, but we've got the record.
That's joking, but we should actually ask our cops.
It's not.